All right, let's call meeting to quarter. It is just past 4:30. All right, additions, deletions from the agenda?
I'm gonna add the contract since you received the contract.
Yeah, was that discussion?
An action item, I understand. So add discussion of the consultant. And then in action items, add approval for the contract for the consultant. So we're gonna add a discussion of the contract where the consultant for the strategic plan and discussion items. We're gonna add, I believe, approval of said contract for the consultant for the strategic plan. Elaine Pinkney.
Pinkney?
P, yeah, Pinkney.
August 16th. I wasn't there, sorry. I didn't have any questions. I see that a lot of those questions from the last meeting is in this packet here. Abby, do you have any questions to it? So I'll make a motion to approve minutes from August 16th. Abby, you have a second. Questions from, anybody? Is it?
Yep, I can see her.
Okay, I can't see myself.
Oh, man, you did just drop off there.
All right, any questions from the public? Or are the minutes from August 16th? Nothing, so I'll prepare. opposed? All right, minutes passed. Consent agenda, superintendent's report. How'd you handle this last time? This is my first time with this agenda, so I'm not entirely sure what transpired with that.
So what we did was if there were questions about the superintendent's report or anything in the superintendent's report, we asked the board or anything in the superintendent's report, and see them. If there were no questions.
Would like to note that in reports, there is a request for unpaid leave of absence. And if the board is so inclined to approve the reports, they will also be approving the request for an unpaid leave of absence.
The board is so, also be approving the request for an unpaid leave of absence.
Can I approve that? If they're not approved, we approve it. Do we have any?
Fully unpaid. So in this case, I'll have to double check with the negotiating agreement. I do not think, I think the only thing that we allow is that the individual will prove a year of service. Can you just pull up on the negotiating agreement?
Luisa, sorry, are you doing the contact tracing late at night?
So whenever the calls come in. So it has been each the evening and the weekend.
Are you getting assistance from leadership?
Me and Jeremy has been really helpful. Charlie and Catherine, they're needed in the nursing office to treat people who have other health issues. But they, they, um, it's, it's logistically. Getting all the results back in with all of those classes out, that was quite a feat in organizational skills to be able to figure out, you know, who could come back and we were looking to get to 50% negative results from students. So that would make sense with the curriculum to have them helping promote that class. So that, that was a lot to be directed. So, yes, that's been a lot of assistance. But I'm generally the one making the phone calls to let folks know that their children are in close contact, so.
Before, that was the state health department doing the contact tracing.
We, well, very initially it was, and then when they're certain, they can keep up with the numbers. We, the school nurses put the state staff in to help with that. So we've been doing it for quite a while. They were, they tried making it over the spring. And, and so, you know, with our experience over the summer with the public, you know, acting in the school program. What if that, we never got.
So you'd rather do the contact tracing rather than having a state thing going on?
Then, when the system is so overconfident, people aren't getting those, um, they were at this point. Also, that we've been notified of, they're not all, they haven't all been in school, and they were infectious. We have not heard from the health department. It is all been our families and individuals that get positive, which is wonderful that we have that relationship. Our school community, but also awareness that the health department. Or add to that, we, we haven't had, last year, we didn't have cases quite so rapid in this rapid succession either.
Right.
And so it's literally like one after another after another, whereas I think last year was so lost that there was more spread out. But it was like six in one day. Yeah, and the other thing that's directly in, somewhat, is that last year, we were able to see in touch with our, the school nurse lead on the health department. She was a wonderful resource. She could access the health department's records and help us, you know, confirm that of a positive cases. But the local office is no longer involved in the positive cases and contract cases. So we are left with a line to call that is answered Monday through Friday, depending on business hours. And so, that's, you know, very helpful. And it was a little bit better last week getting that line answered, but for that.
Sounds like the state is giving us local control. Because I always thought local control was a myth, and when we do, but you see them, you know, it was like, oh, it's local control.
So one of the questions that I asked earlier was, what is the needs to support all of you in this process? Like, is a temporary position, like, would something like that help alleviate the burden and the carry of everything that's happening? How can other, um, leadership positions in the school be used to come in and help support kind of, especially, once Lydia and Jeremy have to go in and then help with COVID, like, how can other physicians be, be funneled in to help support their jobs that they're not able to do? These are people who suffer from COVID for six years of people.
I appreciate the question, I mean.
Can I just, can I pause this for just a second? We have to remember that we're on Zoom, us over here. So Eileen, could you repeat your question? Somebody indicated they saw you talking, or at least they thought you were talking because my microphone picked it up. And so if we could just be mindful to unmute when we speak, and. Am I just repeating your question?
Yeah, sorry, I haven't had a break yet today, sorry. So my question was a couple, a couple pieces there. One, I was asking what is needed that we don't currently have in the school? Bodies-wise, positions-wise, like, would that, would a temporary position until vaccines were eligible, children in our school were eligible for vaccines and there was a time period for them to acquire them? Would, would something like that help with the load that we're carrying? And then a separate, yet still related question is, if we have Luisa and our principals being taken away from their day-to-day responsibilities due to emergencies and contact tracing needs, how can other leaders in the school, not necessarily administration, but like, you know, people that have leadership positions help to fill in where people have been pulled from?
Your question in the support. As far as helping out in the nursing office, there's, it's, it's quite an onboarding information and knowledge in being able to answer questions related to COVID. It's so much so that parents are getting conflicting information from the health department. Because it's really complex to try to counsel people about exposure to isolation and quarantine and lengths of times. So it's not something that someone could easily step into. I will say that we learned today that the.
We have so many questions and we're just doing our normal thing and then all of a sudden it's, you know, we're responsible for your cases and, or the grade or, you know, so it's, it's not, it's not like this is the, it's a long-term shift and we're like saying that every day we're responsible for them and it's not our job. Therefore, you get me like today, it wasn't a day where I was pulled away from my normal position as much as I normally am. Really doing my healthcare scenario, it's a big, it's a big sense. Last week, it started.
We get notified of six, of eight common cases in one year.
Today, if it's on the other room, that'll be awesome.
And two of them are infected, but that takes some tracking down to figure that out, so.
Well, it did just add that the other, some of our other schools in the area where they're considering for help, they have that many cases, so of course several weeks. And we had that many cases in a day. And I think that we have to be aware that, you know, like, that's, that's far reaching, right? We, we reached into programs that weren't part of our school, they're executing in a lot of different places. So there's a lot of tracking through this, making sure that.
I just lost audio again. Can you go?
Do you have a question, or I guess I would add to, obviously, the Pfizer information this morning is promising and some hope. Maybe they're talking about it early, it's Halloween. So in terms of, again, whatever short-term resources we can continue to provide, you know, the challenge or administrators in here that, you know, it really should be all hands on deck to get through the next two months. Make sure our kids can be in this building as much as possible and that our families are supported as much as possible. And that the details really fall in line with our priorities. So just meeting everybody where they're at at this point, because I do feel from an educational perspective that the vaccine, at least for me and my family and my thinking, really this morning provided a light at the end of the tunnel that I wasn't sure was gonna come that quickly. So, yeah, like, again, please, you know, that's obviously Brian's job to support you guys, but. We know it's been a really difficult, it's been a difficult few weeks for everybody involved.
There's really sad stories to tell people about how their lives are affected, so it's not easy.
One of the tests and stay options that I think Abby sent a email chain out with. Is that viable? Will it give us an opportunity to keep your kids in school?
I, I don't feel comfortable. I feel like that's really going rogue. And I know that, you said it feels like a kid was just huge and given local control. We, well, we are given guidance to make decisions. And, and I haven't heard that coming from anyone within the health department.
Of the state, because my understanding is that it's available in statewide, Massachusetts, I mean, this is sort of a rogue nationally. And it would require a state, I mean, I completely agree with you and I understand your concern about statewide action, but I do think whatever conversations we are having at a state-wide level, that we're pushing for that option because I do make my guidance and help with determining the tests, because again, you know, we don't want to add one more thing where you guys are trying to figure out how to cure tests for rapid tests into that option. So if anyone has those conversations, it would be a really important.
Tests is test to stay.
Yes, absolutely.
I would tell you, I don't think it's reasonable to ramp it up to do a test to stay by the time we get the vaccine available. I think that there's a value to test to stay for those kids who aren't immunized after the vaccine becomes available. At least, that would be my take on it. By the time you got the kits here, by the time you taught people how to use the kits correctly, by the time you educated people into the really understand false positivity, it's gonna be an issue. But I think it might be worth thinking more long-term. If we can get the vaccine started in case November 1st, then by the time we come back from Christmas, in theory, we should have a fair percentage of them vaccinated. The other question I would have for you, I don't know the answer to this, so I'm asking you, is this gonna be FDA-approved or emergency use only for kids? I haven't heard either, and I was hoping you had an answer.
I haven't heard it either.
Because I think that, you know, that changes our ability to kind of push, as I say. When it's emergency use only, they don't have quite as much ability to push the vaccine. And I haven't been able to find out through my sources whether it's FDA-approved or emergency use only. I'm hoping that that's not the case.
You know, talking about a four-week turnaround, really, if they're talking about Pfizer implementing, getting all their documents to the FDA by the end of the month, and then they're talking about things that are Halloween, and it's actually getting shot into people's arms. It's gotta be emergency vaccination. I don't think the full authorization, I think it takes like two years.
Well, it depends where they can actually, it depends on where they can build on the FDA-approved adult vaccine. That's, that's why I don't have an answer to that. And if you do it based on that, then you could, but like I said, that's, that's not my favorite.
I could just go back to your question around like a statewide conversation. What I think we've learned from contact tracing in the past week is that the availability of tests that is really what stopped our condition coming back sooner. And so there was that phase delay, which, thank goodness, is stopped. And now we're getting test results between 36 and 48 hours. But then we're hearing from families that they couldn't even find an appointment. They couldn't get an appointment. So they could have tested on Friday, but they couldn't get one until Monday. Or they couldn't get one until later this week, or they had to drive two hours away to get a test. And so that is preventing them from being able to come back or get a negative test result and come back as, as quickly as possible. So the, you know, that type of feedback or that conversation at a state level or within your, you know, individual fields of influence, that would be, I think, the, that would be the most impactful thing for our community is to get a test and get the results back as quickly as possible.
But if you get the rapid tests, that's what I'm saying, if you get the rapid tests on board, you need to be able to stop them. And potentially, as we get into the vaccine season, we could potentially do that.
I think that the day on testing is, is a great thing. So that's being done weekly. And again, last week, was our first week, we tested 97 staff and students and they were all negative. So that was very reassuring. If you had, you know, positive asymptomatic positives in the building. So that was really great. And then it's for a few students, it coincided with their class going remote in the test date. And so we were able to get a couple of them tested and the results came back in about 30 days. It was a great, good turnaround. I think that's gonna get more popular, but we haven't really tested because of our intensity that the environment helping, I think, we'll be able to really get the work out.
Luisa, can I ask if they need a long-term commitment? Are they gonna continue to help with it? Hopefully, some people will be there.
Yeah, exactly.
So to go into this principal's report as well, I know Eileen has some questions with some of the contents of the principal report. And do you wanna ask a few?
Sure. Let me get my mic on. Working, remembering things. So. I guess, um, I'm just trying to start. So I guess if we continue with the quarantine discussion instead of the principal's report, I just have a few concerns about the potential equity for students with the individual cases. And I understand it from the teacher's perspective, so know that I'm saying that. But, um, I'm concerned about families that are choosing, or larger families that kind of have COVID, like, run through the house. And that creates a very long absence of family members. And just families that are having issues getting testing versus other families who can get testing right away or have the ability to have somebody drive a really long distance. So those individual cases, I, I just, I, I appreciate and I understand everything and thank you for all that you're doing. But I just, I am concerned that it has the potential to create some equity issues with how that might play out. And I guess more actionable is how are we supporting these individual cases when they are coming back to the classroom? How are, how are we helping them fill in kind of the content that they missed with direct instruction and group work and things during that time?
Those are really, really great questions and not ones that we have an exact plan for yet. We're just getting into this, but, so just to, just to clarify that we said that we weren't providing individual remote learning for students in those cases. But my expectation is that they're still in daily communication with the student, checking in, what did you work on today? Because, you know, especially in the younger grades, exposure to reading reaches a level of having somebody reach in them and that can be done remotely every day. It's still hitting on those primary skills. There's, they are also, teachers are setting up those electronic platforms too so that there is programs that they know how to use and that they can use to access learning, freckle, rascals, you know, anything on CSOM. And while I'm not saying that is comparable to direct instruction from a teacher and being part of the class, but there is that expectation that teachers and families are shared, like, here's, here's a remote schedule they need to do. Do 20 minutes of freckle, do 20 minutes of read yourself, have them reach a younger sibling. Here's a question for the day, tell me what you worked on. And so they can keep that connection and still build that relationship. So the, well, it's not an individualized plan for them moving forward, but it is a, this is our schedule of stuff in the day. Here's how you can follow up with some stuff at home. So that they're not just like, see you later, come back when you're, when you're okay. And then I really appreciate the question of how we're working them back. And that's something that I can close and check in with my teams in the following week.
Thank you.
And I would just add to that, that, you know, students that access related devices from school, maybe they're at home. Same for the teachers in the upper grades, they've been, they've been asked to make sure that they're, they're providing work for students to do at home on an asynchronous kind of path. They're not, they're not logging in every day. At the same time, they have to let the math class and the language arts class go there. They have work at home that they can be doing. And, you know, to simplifying it, maybe oversimplifying it, it's similar to what we've always done with these teachers, which is we routinely have kids who miss several days because they're out sick or a family emergency or they're having to go on a trip. And, and so, you know, I, I comment that our teachers are, are well adept at being able to provide that, the rituals to catch up when they get back. We can really continue to have that conversation on what that looks like. But I also know that, you know, teachers, for the few cases that we've experienced in the older grades, they can make sure they extend all that to the things they need to be working on, things they can do at home, on their own time, for their own schedule so that they're ready to come back the day of the next.
Great. And to me, my question there comes from two different angles to that this whole, really. Like, I am a parent of kids who have been out both as full class already this year and as individualized pieces. And I think everything that's happened has been fantastic in my experience with them. And I'm also a teacher right now who's, who's used to being, working with students who have been out for a long amount of time. But the amount of students that you're trying to keep track of right now and keeping up with that, it's, it's a lot heavier of a load than it traditionally is. So I just, those are the two places. Related to that, is there a procedure in place for sped services, special education services, when students have to go remote, both individually and as a whole class, how those services will be delivered?
So Kara Lufkin is on the call. Kara, do you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, so can I speak to that? And you've got three computers going right now. I'll mute. I was imagining what it would sound like to you, sorry about that. But, um, yes, we, last year, when we were under all of the COVID directives at the state level, because of the emergency for the state, we were required to have contingency plans for each student's IEP. Because there's no emergency order right now, we are no longer doing contingency plans yet. What we've, what I've been talking with the special education staff and working with Jeremy and Lydia around is that students who are out individually, very similarly to the classroom, you know, will have work. Special educators are attempting to keep those students in their schedule of services. The challenge being that those case managers have a full schedule. And if it's just one class that's out, they, they don't have an ability to change their schedule because they have that full schedule of services. So students are able to participate remotely in their regular time services at this point in time. And, you know, we're looking at it on a case-by-case basis and just trying to figure out the best path. There is no clear answer, you know, as to what we can do. And we literally are looking at every case that comes in. If we have staff members that have to be out, you know, that's another challenge too. We have staff members who have their families that have to be out. And we can't, the challenge being we can't have students who are in the building virtually accessing things outside of the building, virtually accessing things, and then a staff member who's virtually providing services. So I think, you know, we've worked through, we're working through some things in these initial weeks of school. And if we need to determine a different plan, we will try to do that. But at this point in time, students can access services on the regular schedule of services that they would be receiving at school virtually with the special educator.
Thank you. Oh, um. I am, I got it off. The October open house.
I just did, I, I.
I started my volume off.
I started my volume off. Um, with the October open house being canceled is and which totally right, like I appreciate that decision to keep our community safe. Um, is there a plan for an organized um effort to connect with our families in place of the open house?
Unfortunately, we're, the Bible houses followed up really quickly by parent conferences. So there will be that opportunity in November. Um, and I think they will, with the Texas leadership community, that depending on where things are, we'll make sure that we uh consider the possibility of doing an open house or something similar to that in the spring. When um with any luck, things will be a different place we are right now. We're able to have family staff in a little uh in larger groups and be able to do something or get that for community here at the same time. It will will work in the next couple of weeks to kind of find more of what the parent conference uh parameters are. And then we will make sure that that's an opportunity where where our teachers can can connect and make sure they come up to each other.
And then just, I guess, the last question that was on there that I didn't ask yet. Um, the packets for emergency remote learning, will they be continued to be updated so that the content that is in those packets is more relevant to roughly kind of within a reasonable amount of time of what's happening in the classroom? Cause I just wondering, I I the girl's emergency emergency packet was great, but I could see if that was if they were fortunate enough to not hit that until the end of the year, that that might not necessarily be appropriate for what they were doing at school during that time.
Yeah, we said the expectation that when your packet has been issued, you should set up a different one. Um, and.
So that's a different question though, right? Like if the packet doesn't get used, is the packet that they put together at the beginning of the year that's going over letters in second grade, is that gonna be the same packet that would end up getting used in April? If it's never used?
I think that's a great question. I think this is one we have really very good at that point yet. Um, as we uh as we move forward, we're still in the situation where we need to worry about our packets. And those pieces, you know, if later in in the second quarter, school year, then we'll certainly look at what we need to do to make sure that we're relevant and up to date with what's working and where coming in in the future. There, I mean, that's a that's a question that falls along with a lot of other what ifs. And, you know, we love to have that crystal ball of knowing where we're gonna be and what the expectations are gonna be at that time. Um, for right now, what we've asked our staff to do is make sure they have those words packets and or a plan of like those first two days um in order to uh give us a little bit of buffer to to pivot to remote learning. And um and again, we will what that looks like. So we're a little further down down the road. But um, you know, I mean, all of our hope is obviously by the the new year, early April, we're having our own remote learning, emergency packets. Um, if we are, we'll make sure that we're in a position where we are providing work definitely for students that's relevant to what's being.
I just, I I I just might hope that as a district that's overwhelmed by this right now, and rightfully so, that we continue to not live just in this moment, but try to at some point look forward. Because the last school we're meeting asked about remote learning. And rightfully, your your answer is that we're focusing on in-person instruction. And this is where we are right now. So I just, I and I don't fault anybody. I just, it's so hard to be in the weeds and to try to think forward. And I just don't want us to lose sight of that forwardness as we get overwhelmed and and just blindsided by this almost.
The thing we can take into consideration is that the classes that have already gone remote or already come up with a plan for remote, well, most of them won't need those two days of emergency packets. They could be ready to pivot into remote learning. So thinking about your daughter's teacher, like she was all ready and didn't actually have to enact that remote learning. But now she is, she has those two days, she's all ready, she has that schedule that she just needs to plug in play depending on when when and if it happens again. And your um son's kindergarten teacher was like, I'm ready to go because he saw it coming. Down, down the hallway, literally. So he was ready to go. So those not every, and I won't speak for everyone because it will depend on the the case, the year. If they haven't gone remote yet, they haven't needed to put that in place. Or they have put it in place, but then it's real. And so then like scheduling those times coordinated with families, a lot of our teachers are families and it's their kids remote and then their remote. So I can't speak for everyone, but in a lot of cases, our teachers won't need those two days of emergency remote time in the future. And if they don't, if they're ready to go and they don't need them, there's no reason for us to. Like I won't force my teachers to do a two days of emergency remote so that they can get set up and they're ready to go already.
Right.
Um, so I'm lucky, I'm lucky in the case that half my teachers, or not more, are ready to go for remote learning the next time it happens. So or have already experienced it and are just like pick up the, pick up where they left off in terms of their structure and how they're doing, so.
I think there's a comfort and confidence that they um gained from last year's experience. And so they kind of saw the writing on the wall and knew start getting prepared, start getting a platform that we're going to use. And that clearly they've done that.
Doesn't necessarily directly respond to what your question was, but I think it's pertinent to the conversation in general is the fact that it's not likely that we're gonna shift to over remote learning at the middle level this year. Because we have so many of our students who are vaccinated, they don't have to stay home in quarantine. So, you know, applaud for making sure that our students who are twelve and under are vaccinated, right? We've had three or four cases in the last week in middle schools, we've only had a handful of students who are having home in quarantine, which is unfortunate for them. And it speaks to your earlier question of the fact that they're not accessing their learning to the same degree that everybody else is while while we're in the building. And yet at the same time, it also puts us in a position where we don't have to send an entire group of twenty students home to quarantine for ten days to get tested. Um, you know, that those those students were able to, students on the school didn't really interrupt the majority of the learning happening here. Um, and when those get to our home quarantine, they get tested, come back, then the teachers will help support them to to get back untrapped in here in the building. But um, you know, I think that I think that to the to the earlier conversation, right? The the goal here is is that our students become become vaccinated. Um, you're right, you know, that they are for now, to return following lots of families are are myself included, Tommy and their their child that turned twelve, get vaccinated so they can stay in school and not after not asked to uh stay home in those situations.
Start pushing the food back. Start pushing the food rising.
Absolutely, right, sure. And uh I believe there's a question about um can we learn more about the PLCs?
Sure, sure. So.
Some of the topics.
So we have um several PLCs over here at the moment.
Could you let everybody know out there in the audience?
We have uh several PLCs over there.
First of all.
And it is um, one, it's a change agent that we believe in, that thinks that this is really a key to improving our in- instructional ability and quality in school. Um, and uh we started it two, two years ago and then it was on pause last year because of everything that's going on. And then we uh re uh we refreshed it this year. Um, but after seeing what few needs the year before, we refreshed it with each one of the members of the leadership team leading the PLC. So we're modeling what it looks like, how it's facilitated with the hopes of then um uh, you know, having someone then in the group then take over because they've seen it modeled, they've gotten the practice and 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 that and so on and so forth. So then the PLCs that we have, we have math and ship math leader, math PLC. Um, we have a literacy PLC and then on the different content areas in the middle school have their own PLCs. And Jeremy is leading the literacy group and those individual PLC, PLCs. Jody is leading the math PLC. Cara is leading the special educator PLC, which is looking on how, looking at how to um do specialized instruction. And, you know, also special education things. Paperwork. I won't, I won't get into the like, you know, acronyms and but like paperwork and making sure they're following the the law and meeting kids where they're at.
You're getting, you're getting a th- you're getting a thumbs up off camera.
Thank you, great, great.
Getting reimbursed.
And getting reimbursed, absolutely. Um, and then I am uh leading the healthy schools, um PLC and the healthy schools are the school nurses, the school counselors, the behavior specialists. Um, and I think that's it. And then um I am rotating with leading the URS PLC. So the the healthy schools PLC is looking at how we meet the whole child in their disciplinary groups and then interdisciplinary groups. And the URS PLC is looking at um implementing responsive classroom, which is our tier one uh social emotional learning um approach across grades pre K through five, is that what it's just? And then um, then the six and up is developmental design. The responsive classroom has specific, a specific approach for URS teachers. And we're all going to get trained on the sixth and then we'll start with PLC. We'll all rotate between the two, uh because they're two small groups and the others are much larger.
So I noticed um on your question, I mean, you asked a question about how are, how does the professional learning community connect and work with early release days and in-service days and all of that? And how are they connected? And what's the level of continuity between them? I think that was kind of the question.
I didn't ask that, but I would love to know your answer.
I thought that's kind of like, that's what my brain figured. So for the math, um I have the large group of PLC because all of my instructors of the school, um K through eight are part of the math PLC. So we have dovetailed our professional learning uh community times, um focusing on the four score questions about, you know, um what are you, why are your students to know? How do you know if they learned it? What do you do if they haven't learned it? How do you extend for students that need more? Um, and so it's all data informed. And our work, um teachers can have an opportunity, they're always in that cycle of inquiry around data, depending on what grade level they are, they are and what assessments they've used, both formal and informal in the classroom. And so we also have our consultants from all learners. So they meet with us during our early release times and our in-service. So it's part of getting better at the new math program we have. Making sure that we're using data to implement our instruction and that we're constantly in this cycle of learning and new learning our professional development. It's all in part and parcel, but allows bulk of our classroom instructors around mathematics.
I'll just add that each one of the PLCs follows that that protocol of what do we want our students to know? How do they know that? What do we do if they don't know that? And what is it we do if they've got it? Um, so that's each PLC follows those four steps in tweaked a little bit to me, you know, the concept.
So how my, one of my questions about the PLCs was how is that information then shared with the larger school community, right? So is it, it is it possible for a teacher to be in a literacy PLC and a math PLC? And if not, which I don't know. But if not, like if I am teaching both literacy and math to my students, how can I? Do I have access to notes or to findings or to summaries from the other PLC? So I can implement that in my own practice while I am in another group?
I'm not really sure that's pertinent with the way our PLCs are set up at the moment. So if you're a generalist, in the great case, you're free and you are only doing math. And so.
In the PLCs, yeah, yeah.
Yes, whatever idea is wrong and the PLC. That's right, it's oh, it is a PLC.
Just that that are getting, you're only doing math.
Right. Teaching everything, but the PLC bodies are only focused on the math. That's that's your focus this year. The content specialist, so for cannot, you're focused on your content. So you're a math teacher, then you're focused on that. And you're in math PLC. If you're a language arts teacher, you're in language arts PLC. If you're a science teacher, so it's like middle level, you're in those PLCs. And so there there is that, there is that crossover. So so for example, the mind, the the work that the um middle level language arts team is doing isn't work that needs to be, you know, the the what are they teaching, what are their students learning? What are we gonna do after we've decided, what have we learned, what our students have uh skills for and what are we doing next? That's not pertinent to ours, those who are teaching math at the K three level.
And that came up as a request from our teachers. The year before, we did differentiated professional development and there were um, you know, in those grades, we had two people doing math and two people doing literacy. And then there was a, they were like a huge request from our teachers to all do the same one at the same time because that continued the conversation that I made and allowed for more um collaboration, you know?
So you're saying that like all, like second, third teachers are all doing math? Right. Okay, so there's no literacy PLC for the younger?
The primary groups, correct.
Thank you.
So that focuses on our guys. And again, like Lydia said, that was a direct request from our teachers. Um, but I don't want you to think that that means our teachers are not capable of supporting literacy if they ask for it. Because we are, we have the program um Council of the Classroom, which we started last year. So we have our members of our academic support team who are doing side by side teaching with teachers this year, um which is something we've had coaches before, we've had interventionists before. And we kind of um did away with that very strict rigid roles and and allowed that that position to kind of be opened up more. Um, and so we have teachers who have contacted um members of the academic support team and said, hey, I need help on this specifically. It's not part of my math PLC, but this is something I'm passionate about. So I'd like someone to come up with me. And and so that's happening um across the school at different grade levels. So we still have that um wonderful opportunity for people who want to continue to dig into those literacy pieces. And we do.
And they're picking it up, they're very much utilizing our academic support team.
How's the implementation of the mathematics curriculum going?
So far, no, I'll go with, um, we had our first major PLC last Tuesday. And um we're to start continuing that PLC with what's called the how's it going section. Um, it's to really allow them to talk vertically. I ask them to find for other people that are not on the same grade level as them. So we can kind of get that vertical perspective of what's working, what's not working. And unanimously right now, people are extremely happy um with what they're seeing. The the um conversation around the required dialogue and communication between students around problems in mathematics, that was kind of a highlight for everyone. Then they're seeing that even the lowest grades, um that, you know, there's a real emphasis about having a learning and teaching all students, youngest grades all the way up through, how to talk to one another um and how to have disagreements when someone shares their thinking and reasoning. And we actually got to see that in practice when we did our learning walks last week. We all walked away going, wow, that was impressive. Um, at the youngest ages, at the higher end, um having students say, I do what you're saying, but I I kind of did it differently. And just the level of communication and respect that we were able to observe was definitely a highlight. And again, teachers, when they're in our PLC, talked about that. Um, the one thing that they want more support around obviously is how to use the components of the program successfully um within the time period they have. And so that the work that we'll continue with our consultants on how to do that. Um, and then lastly, you know, what are the digital resources um that are available to all teachers? And so we'll dig, there are lots out there um through illustrative mathematics. So we're gonna dig deeper into that in our PLC so teachers can start to like have a little stretch and understanding around that.
But kind of build on that, that answers part of what I had asked, which was that sounds like the qualitative end of how things are gonna go.
And it does.
But how about quantity?
Perfect, because that's my notes right here, so I bet you got them. So that was the quality of our talking about pieces. And that's about really improving our structural practices and our content understandings, working ahead of time. So the piece that you were asking about is like the student learning outcome. How are we measuring the impact of the program? So we do that the same way we do any program. It's about formal and informal assessments, right? And so what are we seeing, what are we noticing over time? Um, the program has every day what is called a cooldown section, which are basically exit tickets, which are formal assessments, that's that day to day, minute by minute, that allows a teacher to pivot um within within the classroom in that moment. Or tomorrow, I need to repeat this because too many students didn't understand it. Or I got a couple of students who didn't get it, so I'm gonna conform with them in the morning so that they're ready to continue on with the learning in math class. So that's one way to talk about how's that going? And then the other piece is around our assessments, right? So um our assessments around our high leverage concepts that were identified in terms of the uh most essential concepts and skills that students have to own to be successful in the um subsequent years of mathematics. So we have what are called HLA's, which are high leverage assessments that we'll use to assess those um throughout the year. And then um obviously we have our formal assessment, the SFS. Um, we are using uh from third grade and up, um beginning next week. The SFS has interim assessment blocks, which are informal assessments. So they are. So they are very much, you know, standard aligned. The teachers can give those assessments to see where their students are in the big picture. And help them determine through data analysis, what are the next steps for instruction? So that's an ongoing process in any content that we have, but kind of a formal step that we use to measure impact um around students' improved learning outcomes. So it's kind of two pathways that we have to think about.
So can you describe what major levels of?
Sure, so an HLA is um depending on the grade level, four to six questions that really emphasize that um really critical concept in mathematics. And so it has varying levels of questions around the same concept. So then we can analyze where students are in that progression of their understanding for that concept.
So that's for the individual, are you collating the data so that it applies to the class?
We are, so every time we um end the PLC process, we talk about those four questions. So when we're in that process, every um major assessment that we do, and the HLAs, we consider those formal. They're part of our um assessment windows that usually we do fall, winter, spring. Um, and so those are more formalized and we, and we unpack those together, um, grade level teachers and talk about what do we see? And they actually have a sheet called data to instruction. And so it's literally talking about what are our students doing well? What are our students struggling with? And what are our next instructional step? And they have actually both whole group instructional step and then small group specific instructional step. Because we're still working on whole group instruction and that differentiation around instruction for like students needing more targeted support.
Are the HLAs out of the class?
No, the HLAs are out of the work with all learners, which is the high leverage concept. Again, they're all uh common core aligned. And some of them, I don't know if I mentioned this to you, but um I think I did in my write-up. That illustrative mathematics has been around since two thousand eleven, actually before. And they actually started when the Common Core came out. And we used to use some of their assessments locally um to kind of gauge where our students were. And so what we're seeing um in terms of the mirror, what's, what's happening in the cooldowns, in the um the formative assessments on the day to day exit ticket, is really aligning with what we know are our um high leverage concepts. There is not, that is something that's in the process. And I think what's intriguing about the HLAs is that um we have not done the work. And we're trying to figure out, we started that, not last year because COVID, but the year before. On our content, our math content leadership team, really talking about what does it mean to be proficient on that assessment? And really start gauging what's the success criteria for each of those questions? In terms of where are they in the progression of understanding on that concept? Um, we, the plan is, no, I'm going to do it again, um, that that math leadership, content leadership team um will start revving back up this year in October so that we can continue that process. But that's where we kind of left off when COVID interrupted our work.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh consent agenda is complete. So do I do a motion on it now or do I do it later?
I have two questions, one.
Okay.
One was going to answer this.
Sure.
The other one, I can get it in my phone.
That's okay, no worries. You did, that was the math.
Yep.
Uh, let me look. What details, the, those are looking for features, expecting students in the event of remote learning. So, it's okay. Um, so I can do a motion for consent agenda?
You can.
All right, so I can make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written. Uh, questions from the public?
So moved.
All right.
Okay.
Second? Did I get a second?
Yeah.
Are there any questions from the public? None here and soon none on the chat. All there?
I.
All right. Opposed? All right. Moving on to discussion items, operational decisions during the school year.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that we table this discussion for tonight. I think that given, I just don't feel like I'm in a position, or any of us are really in a position to make a, a decision on this right now. Given. So I ask.
Tabled. Uh, so remote learning protocols, uh, most of that has, has been answered during the consent agenda. Um, my only question was, what's the exact definition of close contact?
So uh, four hours in the same classroom.
Four hours in the same classroom?
I guess, uh, or four, four, four hours before, it's the same contained space. Um, and or um.
Close to the.
You said eating or.
Yeah, I, I read about that.
That's where, that's, that's where um uh the difference would be between the younger grades and the older grades. The younger grades, they could improve their grades, they stay in their, their cohort for the day. So when there's a student who is the test scorer or somebody that's positive, that entire cohort is likely to just contact. They're there together for the year.
Yeah.
At the middle level, they start out advisory, they shuffle into new groups and they travel two different blocks through the day and new groups each block in many cases. And so at that level, we're looking who they're sitting with when they're in class. Um, and considering who those contacts are. So it limits the number of students who are considered close contacts. It just makes it a little bit more challenging since we have to tap on uh.
But that's basically a positive case for individuals and that's when the contact tracing comes into effect and call all the. Yes. So what was the deal with the close contacts at soccer career?
So, so that close contacts turned out to be all positive. Um, a family uh who had used, um, they asked the test that showed three or four times that it was positive. And so based on that, I had Joe Boston say, Airet, uh, contacted the Department of Health, recommended that we use that as, as, as uh, we assume that's positive. And we dapped on that, uh, and so based on that recommendation, so he contacted us and we followed up with his recommendation, his need, which was to um, the quarantine to be tested. Uh, once the uh PCR test results came back and showed that it was actually a negative test or a negative for COVID. And so we were able to, to set that in.
How do they do close contacts if they're outside playing soccer? It just seems like it's a real remote.
It is, and then up until uh, up until last week, there really wasn't guidance supported. Uh, to be able to make the right decisions around that. Now that I was referencing earlier, which is, I think you referenced it earlier.
She did.
Um, which is that if we're not clear on who contacts are, that we wouldn't ask anybody to quarantine, but we would ask everybody to pass. So we, like, last week, had that happen, if we had this guidance. We would have asked all of those, so those students to be tested, but we would have waited after then.
That makes sense, just because the spread out of time is negligible.
But at that point in time, we didn't put that guidance in place. We were calling in, and it's important to note again, it was, I'm going to say again, the Department of Health has told Joe to quarantine those, ask those students to quarantine and have a test. And based on that, is why we followed up with that recommendation.
So when a child tests that they have to stay home until a test result is that?
Correct.
Right, well, I heard Eileen mention weeds uh earlier on the conversation. Let's say a child was in kindergarten, pandemic happened. Uh, so now they're in second grade and the weeds are growing pretty thick. So uh, I'm just, I, I was concerned that, uh, you know, these kids are just dealing with this year after year after year. And uh, what does remote learning consist of? And you answered that. So I appreciate that because I, I only stay on the school board because of the kids, whether they're my, my own or kids in the community. Uh, because typically they don't have a voice uh at that, that age. And uh, I'm uh just concerned that this just keeps going and going and going and going. And obviously we're bringing our hopes into the vaccination for age, what, three to twelve? And I, we can't act on this now, but I assume that there'll be a contingent of parents who refuse to have their child vaccinated. And it will be easy for the school district to say, well then, that's your choice, can't come to school. And, but obviously, we all care about all the kids and it's not that simple of an answer in reality.
Probably not the school district has to say that, I hope that that education is at state level.
Agreed.
We're in good looking at that decision.
Yeah, that's true.
I think that, I, I feel your frustration, but I think that the direction that needs to be directed at is that.
I agree.
For the little leadership of the state, you know, what the, the decisions that we're making on a daily basis. How is that, and it needs to be based on the guidance that we're provided by the Department of Health and Agency of Education. So until they change their direction or their, their uh thinking around this, we're not in a place where we're going to likely change much of what we're doing because that's the direction we're expecting of all.
Yeah, that magnitude of a decision definitely should be state level.
No question. That's what I'm saying, that I think, you know, if we get a couple, if we get the rapid kits up and running, once we have the vaccination available, we have a whole heck of a queue of kids missing school. They're going to have a higher false positive rate with the rapid tests. They've got a much higher false positive rate. But you're going to be using those on a very small group of kids, hopefully, um, as the kids get vaccinated. Um, so I think, you know, again, as, as was mentioned, you know, and again, I know you guys are really trying to look forward, but if, if I, if I look into patterns of all, how you keep more kids at school. Once the vaccine is out, we're really thinking, you know, we've talked about timeframes, a three week lag between first vaccine, second vaccine. You're talking about January before you get the majority of the kids vaccinated in the best case scenario. But if you get the, if you're vaccinated, then we can do the rapid tests on the small percentage that aren't, to potentially keep them at school.
And I think I would urge the board to use their voice with the, the SBA to help us advocate for that. Because as Luis said, and Luis is a very forward-thinking medical professional. She's reluctant to simply go forward because the science is good. We're going to need some help from boards and the superintendent association will advocate for it. And then the principals association will advocate for it. Um, and, and to that end, we, we want to have our kids in school as much as possible. We will be urging as much as we can, the students and all staff get vaccinated. And at the same time, we, we already know that that's not the case. I mean, we've had to respond at times because there are some staff members who've chosen not to vaccinate. And they are, when they're considered close contacts, they can't be in the building. So we know the path forward to keeping students in school is vaccinations. We're going to need help from all of our um educational partners to help move the needle on further steps from both the Department of Health and the Agency of Education. Because I agree with you Dean, it's, I think it's going to be a small number. And at the same time, if we're simply doing it because we think it's the best, um, we, we got in that situation earlier in June. We thought we could, we thought we could ask people to provide proof of vaccines and then allow them to be unmasked. And then we were absolutely told, you cannot have a recommendation that's stronger than what the health department put out. So we will, we want some help for sure.
Yeah, we, a lot of that close contact, whether this is emergency use or whatever.
Correct, correct.
Especially approved in the state can really put the people down and say, we insist on vaccine and stuff can be religious assumptions.
Mm-hmm. All right.
I think that's probably really good, as we think about this and as we talk to our networks about this. I think it's, there's a line in the advisory that I talked about, she thinks that I thought was pertinent to this, which is that it's a single turn of that conversation. And we, but I, we need to round, you know, our kids and the rapid tests, as we talked before, that, um, you know, we're sort of lucky in our home isolation, it's not safe. Um, and those are the ones we're most afraid of, and those are the ones that tend to be the most vulnerable. And they're also the ones that may not be able to get vaccinated, so we have to, you know, like, we're trying to save it, so. Um, you know, I think that's important, if we need to talk about, like, with our networks, because that, um, almost got to look like isolation kind of thing.
Okay, moving on, the contract for the strategic plan, I signed it today. It's a long process to get the contract, but here it is. So it simply states that the VSB working with Elaine Pickney, who's a retired superintendent from uh Champlain Valley, will assist the steering committee by facilitating meetings in the meeting forum, providing research, consulting on the development of a strategic plan, implementation, implementation strategy and timeline, as well as periodic strategic plan updating and implementation support. So our plan is to have a strategic plan done by Rachel at the latest. And Elaine said that should certainly be doable. Our process is to have her come here in the next board meeting, just to introduce herself and uh talk about uh the process of moving forward with it. And then get started hopefully right away and bang this document out.
Thank you.
So under action items, I need a motion to approve the contract I already signed.
Well, I don't see the expenditure since we haven't.
Okay. All right, expenditure is eight thousand dollars, uh, I think plus mileage. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh expenditure for the forthcoming strategic plan for the St. John's Creek School District.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Read it.
Um, uh, any questions from anybody else there?
I have a question that's more, can we get a certain fund for the Board of Education? I would view this as very educational for the Board, can we use some more educational funds? But.
Hold on, right, hold on right line for me. Yep, for sure. Uh, any questions from anybody up there?
Nothing in the chat?
Uh, all there?
Hi.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, future agenda items? What's that all about? Wanted to, it was an idea to list anything that was a holdover from this meeting that should be discussed at any future meetings. I'm sure there's no, um, misunderstanding. Uh, it seems like we'll certainly have a lien on the agenda for, for this. Is there anything else that people?
I think you can eliminate the question about math, or I think the other three remain.
Okay, yeah, uh, it's good that I have more, for sure. Really, I'm trying.
Roof?
Roof.
So my question is, all the data follows.
Well, test course was.
It's not complete.
Oh, right.
We're waiting to hear back information from you.
Yeah, it'll be good.
So it's just, I, I just want.
Sure, no, absolutely.
That way, so you don't.
I absolutely agree. I don't want to feel like a lack of.
This, this is an appropriate time to talk about the time of our meeting starting.
Okay, sure, any time's appropriate for me.
I just, I, when we talked about starting a little bit earlier, I thought that we were talking about five thirty and I put all my schedule five thirty. And four thirty is, it's not accessible for a lot of families to participate. And me personally, like, I, I have a school commitment until four forty-five every, every Monday. I had to finagle a little this time. So I just, if we could all agree, if something's going to be moved that earlier, if that can be discussed before it's agreed upon, that would be great.
My understanding is this is temporary.
For, for these two.
But we have another one, right?
Correct, yeah, for the, for.
And so I, I just.
Start the, wrap it up and then we finish it if we have someone present.
Yeah, that was the goal for today.
Because for me to get here at four thirty is almost impossible. But you did it. That?
You did it.
I did it without, without a computer and.
He was late. Dean was, never likes to be late. That puts a lot of pressure on him.
So I mean, the commitment that we've made to all those three hours, that's already more than, than the, the time that we spend. If, if we need to do it differently, we should certainly discuss it. You know, as it is, we're probably going to give him two hours tonight, which is less than what we were paying for and what we asked for, which would mean either going long, you know. And, and I understand, and I absolutely understand where people are coming from and how hard it is to make these things work. Um, so I'm looking to suggestions on how to do this. Well, next meeting, we don't have as much to talk about, uh, some of the stuff I asked to put on the agenda. Uh, but it'll save us at least a half hour by not having as much on.
So would it be possible if it had to be at this time to do workshop? And then have our regular general meetings at the time, like those discussion items and everything? When, we would normally have it around six o'clock, so people who are working can, if they choose to participate, have the avail, availability. So not even like workshop, if reverse it or workshop and then like have a set time that we're going to discuss these things and then go back to workshop. And I understand that that might not be ideal. Um, I just think that if we want to be open with our community members, being able, like, four thirty is just, it's. Um, I just think that if we want to be open with our community members, being able, like, four thirty is just, it's, it's early. You have parents who are at work, you have parents who are running around dropping people off at soccer, you are, or baseball, or it, it's just not an ideal time for community involvement in our meetings either.
We'll talk with the equity training next, next meeting. Sure, and just, you know, ahead of time on the speak to Elaine next week, so.
So if we start at, so the question, the, when do we start that personal meeting? Because we have Paul for three, Paul and Donna for three hours. So if, or we're going to have to split it up earlier, and I would want to work with Paul to see what works for him and Donna. Um, so even if we started at four thirty, it sounds like that's not ideal. If we start at five, we would use the entirety of the time that's bookended to the end for eight o'clock. And I don't want people to have to stay later than that. All of us are working. Um, so are we looking at, instead of one more session, are we looking at two more sessions with Paul and Donna? Um, like a two hour session now, a two hour session on the fourth, and a two hour session on the eighteenth? Um, I'm just trying to be.
Just advice, but it's easier for me to stay later than it is to come earlier.
I'm, I'm trying to be mindful of people that are going to have an earlier turnaround and they're already maxed right now. So I'm trying to protect my principles and making sure that they can go home at eight o'clock. And get a somewhat decent night's sleep rather than having to have them go home at nine and turn back around for six. Um, so that's, that's my hope in terms of protecting that eight o'clock time slot. I'm open, I mean, I could talk to Paul and maybe it's three, two hour sessions instead of two, three hour sessions, which would then have a, starting at five. The workshop would go until seven and we'd have an hour for a regular business.
Um, can I make a suggestion that we see how the next few hours go, let's table this discussion, how it will be, as a result of, I mean, if you got out of the discussion, you're going to have, so the fall will be informed by what takes place over the next couple hours. So rather than trying to figure out, we have to get information, what we perceive, and then we'll have the right piece of information we can be, and to figure out what makes the most sense. I also appreciate eight o'clock hard out. My kids wait for it really.
Uh, public comment?
I don't know. The public comment on Zoom.
All right, so we go right to the workshop, we'll turn up to that. Okay.
Wireless. You have the network school anywhere in your.
Well, since they went to the workshop, uh, I've got nothing. It's still counting. You haven't been disconnected.
Is the workshop private?
Hi, this is Donna. Can anybody hear me? Hello, hello? Penny, you hear me?
I can hear you, yep.
Oh, great. Does, I'm, I think Paul is getting set up. Paul, we can't hear you. You might want to take a stretch break. For a few minutes till six, we'll start right at six.
So, um, where to start? We planned for three hours and we've cut it down to two and a half hours and I will kind of, so we, we think. Complicated, other than we want to use ourselves. It's, it's, one of the pieces about this work is, as we, there's, there's a saying that guy has guided me through for a long time. It's on my email, it's a Daniel Horne Steen quote. If education happens, when you learn something, you teach those, you teach others. And for me and my own journey around this work, that's good. And, and so, um, I think what we can do is we'll start with introductions and Donna, why don't you start? And then I will, so then I will do some context setting in. And what we're going to do today is we'll just be able to kind of frame this work, um, in terms of thinking about that. So Donna, would you want to introduce yourself? You might be muted.
She's not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused, sorry. Um, I didn't, I didn't really hear what you were saying, Paul. I'm, well, first of all, everybody, hello. And, uh, this is a new experience for us, this, um, hybrid meeting with, uh, and, but, um, we hope it'll, it'll be okay for you today. And, um, and we really, um, hear or heard from in our survey, you know, just the concern that there's so much on the table that you're dealing with. So we hope this won't be too much more stress and it'll be a, an, 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 a positive evening with you today. So I'm Donna Vivins and, um. I'm Donna Vivins and I've been working with Paul, uh, doing anti racism work and work, working across different, around equity issues for many years, over twenty years. I hear an echo, um, maybe. Okay.
A little confusing because I have to mute and unmute, but when I'm sharing my screen, I can't unmute. Oh, yes, I can.
So, um. Paul, I'm just, I'm sorry. Do you want, what do you want? I'm sorry, everybody. I got confused because I thought Paul was starting.
Oh, go ahead and finish your introduction, Donna.
Okay, so I'm Donna Vivins and I've been doing this, uh, work for many years and I'm really happy to be with you tonight. I, I, um, I started out doing this work at the Women's Theological Center, which is a, a center that looked at the connection between women, faith, uh, spirituality, religion, and social justice. Um, and we did a lot of anti racism there, mostly because a lot of the women had come through the Y W C A. Um, most recently, I did a project in Boston with the Union Minority Neighborhood, looking at Boston's busing and desegregation program, but, um. The desegregation history and asking questions about what that history meant, means for education today. I'm really interested in education issues and, uh, and really eager to, to do this work with you. So glad to see you. Paul, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
Thank you. So, um, sorry, we're just trying to fix this airplane while it's flying. Um, my name is Paul Marcus. I live in Concord, Vermont. Uh, my wife teaches at London State, or, sorry, N V U London. So to be renamed again. Um, so as Donna said, we've been working together probably for over twenty-five years. So we bring, I think, actually, we probably bring about sixty years combined experience to this work. And, um, I, the, the first part of my career, I actually taught. I was, I taught in independent schools, um, I taught biology and other sciences. Um, as well as some, working with some public schools, uh, students at the advanced studies program at the St. Paul School in New Hampshire. Um, from that, it led me to, it was through that work that actually led me to this work. And when I realized that I, that I was seeing things that I didn't know I didn't know, it was a profound change for me and it moved me to want to do this work on a different level. Because I believe that it's a, it, it is, as my mentor Horace Hall used to talk about, we, we live in a nation founded on a terrible contradiction until we can't. And until we can deal with that contradiction, we're not going to get through it. And so we continue, we, we, if we, if we go back and look at our history, we see that playing out back to pre colonial times, back to colonial times. So in that process, I, I connected with an organization in Boston that Horace Hall had founded called Community Change and, and, uh, eventually served as executive director of that organization for, for, um, sixteen years. And at the same time, um, co-taught a class with Horace at Boston College in the History Development of Racism, and then taught that class on my own and as well as a, a class at the Simmons School of Social Work. And so i- we both have, Donna and I have both taught, we've both been doing this work as activists, we've both been doing this work as, as directors. And so we, we bring a, a bit of background and knowledge, but, but one of the keys for both of us is that we're always in a constant learning mode around this work. And so it's, it's almost as if the more I learn, the less I feel as I, I feel as I know. So what I'd like to do is just do a little bit of framing and talk with you about some, some goals for this process. As soon as this comes up, yeah. And we like to start with this poem, and you all have it on your screens. I actually would ask that if each of you wouldn't, wouldn't mind reading a paragraph of this. I think if we, if the first person reads the first two lines, one, two, three, four, um, there's actually six, but I'll read the last one. If somebody wouldn't mind starting and just, just, uh, let's read this together. First two?
Yep. Give me the listening ear and the right listening seat.
Give me the listening ear, I seek this day, the much straight from the world, the correctioned mashes. The world, the word that resides for me, the nature of myself, that causes me to pause and reconsider. The word that challenges me to deeper constipation and higher resolve. The word that lays bare, that my own identity, that seeps upon every good impulse of my nature, channeling it from past of healing in the lives of us.
Give me the piece of this here, I seek this day, the disciplined mind, disciplined heart, a disciplined life, that makes my ear the focus of attention through which I may become mindful of expressions of life foreign to my own. The sleep stimulation that lists out of old ruts and established habits, which keep me conscious of myself, my needs, my personal interests.
Give me this day, the eye that is willing to see meaning of the ordinary, the familiar, the commonplace, the eye that is willing to see my faults for what they are. The eye that is willing to see the likable qualities in those I may not like, the mistakes in what I thought was correct, the strength in what I had labeled as weakness.
Steal that from you. Give me the eye that is willing to see that thou hast not left thyself without witnessing every living thing, thus to walk with reverence and sensitivities through the days of my life. You give me the listening ear, the eye that is willing to see. And that's a piece by Howard Furman. Howard Furman was an African American theologian. He was, uh, one of the first people involved, uh, with the nonviolent movement and, uh, he was one of Dr. King's professors. He was at Boston University and actually the first dean of a major university, the first black dean of a major, um, university theological center. Um, and, and we use that for us, much of this work is about, is creating a space for learning. And the beginning of this process, um, will, will be that, Donna, did you want to add anything to that?
Uh, yeah, we always like to say that when we, um, when, when we do this work, um, we, when we have, like, in this poem, it says thou. And, uh, and, but we're not, we're not referring to a higher being, although some people, that are grounding. But it's really about deepest values that you hold, about what it is that, 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 that propels you to do the work that you do.
So I want to do a little framing and I also want to acknowledge, um, and, and some of you acknowledged this on the survey and thank you everybody for completing that survey. How, um, given everything that you're, and we are all in there, um, that we understand the, the. This is a lot to think about and in fact may be difficult to be thinking about. And so we want to just name that. And, um, Donna will talk about, we'll talk about something we call transformative practices in a, in a minute, but part of that is taking care of ourselves in that process too. As we think about this work and thinking about objectives over whatever period of time we'll be working with you, these, these, we won't get to all of these today. But, um. First stage of this is learn and apply a framework for understanding and identifying and communicating about quote unquote race, systemic racism. And again, white supremacy in the U S. And we're going to be talking about that term in a very different way, I think, than a, a lot of people understand it. So part of this work is unloading the baggage around some of this work. And so, um, and, and that's important because what often happens. The way one understands these issues has a profound influence on, on, on how you interpret reality. There's, there's another saying that I use all the time, a guy I worked with a number of years, one environmental educator named Ed Clark, who wrote a paper and his paper was called, If I Hadn't Have Believed It, I Wouldn't Have Seen It. And so the, the lenses that we have have a profound influence on how we think about this work and how we see it. And oftentimes, as I listen to the discourse, there's very, people are using words like race and racism and other words, and they think they're meaning the same thing. And they're not talking about the same thing at all. So it's impossible even to have a conversation. A second objective. A second objective is to explore your own individual experiences of those three things. A third is to examine the meaning and role of anti-racism in your life and your school district. And the fourth is to support the normalization of talking about and addressing issues of race and systemic racism. And so the, the big piece of the initial work is that, is that number, is that first piece, that number one piece, about thinking about this, a framework through which to understand this, and understanding, in fact, the different frameworks. And one of the things, and we'll say this, we're not here to impose anything on you. Ed Clark said another thing. He said, "If you want to change behavior, you, you need to expand context." And really, what we're trying to do here is, is, is expand context around thinking about these issues. What you do with that is up to you. We, we can't, we're not here to beat this into you. That's not our approach. We want to create a learning environment, um, for all of you. And I had a few other slides here. I'm not gonna, the, the one, the one I want to use here is this idea about leaders as equity designers, and that, that, as we go through this, we're going to be talking, we have a system in this country of equity by design. And we have, wha- what we want to do is, is, is order equality by design. And so to do that, we need to be PC, which is, so we're using that term, talking about precise and clear. It's, 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 it's difficult to challenge something you don't see that you don't see exists. And so again, that's a big piece of, of, of this work initially. And then I'll, I'll jump over to Donna if I can figure out how to, well, let's see how it works, Donna, because it looked like you turned your volume down a little bit, and I wasn't getting the echo, because it's not obvious to me how I'm gonna mute myself.
So, um, what we wanted, want to, um, to start again with the framing of, uh, how we want to be together. Uh, sometimes people use guidelines or, um, also there's other times we use transformative practices. But the touchstones or field markers that we use here, sometimes they're called boundary markers, are from the work of Parker Palmer. And I'm not sure if people there are familiar with Parker Palmer, but he's an educator. And his work has been taken up by the Courage and Renewal Center in Seattle, Washington. And the, the work, their, their work was first with teachers, and it was about, um, helping teachers to have the courage to stay grounded in the, in the values and the reason and the spirit and the purpose that first brought them to, um, to teaching. And the renewal part was to constantly renew the self so that you can be the best teacher that you can be. And, 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 and so a lot of the work is about getting in touch with your inner teacher. So it's not about, you know, right, it's not about challenging each other so much as it's about really learning about yourself and taking this in for yourself, as Paul was saying. And we've expanded the boundary markers, so they, we, they, they, they're actually chosen from different people that, different groups, and different contexts that we work in, 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 in designing, uh, our work. So the first one is be as present as possible. And that's really important today, tonight, because we know everybody's tired, and, and all we ask is that you be as present as possible, and that you take care of your mind, body, and spirit. The second one is try on, and that's from Visions, which is another, uh, group that does consulting and, and coaching around these issues. And that's to try on new ideas. If you learn, hear something that, that, that's new to you, just try it on. You don't have to buy it. Just try it on and see what, what, what you make of it. Uh, the next one is extend welcome and receive welcome. Know that your experience, your understanding is welcome here, and extend that welcome to other people. Speak your truth in ways that respect the truth of others. And that's with an understanding that to, to get to share truth requires really hearing a lot of different understandings of what the truth is and being open to that. When the going gets rough, turn to wonder. I always say, when somebody says something that sounds really strange, uh, instead of saying, "Boy, that sounds really strange, say, I wonder how they got to that", and really just stay with them to try to, try to have some curiosity about where they're coming from. And then the other part of that is, um, to just wonder, uh, what a wonder it is that there is so much diversity that we have to move through in order to get to some shared understanding. Welcome silence, welcome quiet, welcome stillness. Uh, we, we, we think it's really important to sometimes, well, it's not said, or when, when people can't say the word, that's just as important as what's said, you know, that, that just being silent, trying to come to someone is a part of trying to come to some understanding. Practice confidentiality, and that is to just, um, really listen to others', others', um, stories, and, uh, take what you, what you learn, but try to leave people's stories here. And also, if, when, you know, what we usually ask in a workshop is that if someone shares something, uh, before going into that thing, ask them if they're willing and, and willing to talk, if they want to talk about it more, because they might be in process with their own inner teacher and might not want to explore it any, what, yet. So just give them that, that sense of privacy. But the next part, the next, uh, touchstone, which is actually a part, comes from Human Systems Dynamics, and that's an organization that we are, have been very much influenced by too. And that's a, that's a, um, a, the, a, a group that really has a lot of tools for dealing with a complex adaptive system, which racism is, and we'll be talking more about that. And so with that, it's moving toward inquiry, moving toward a place where you can be inquiry. And there are four parts to that. You turn your judgment, you're trying to turn judgment, which we all make judgments, into curiosity. Like, look at the judgment, but be curious about what's on the side of it. Turn disagreement into shared exploration. So when there is a disagreement, stand together and look at that disagreement instead of clashing heads. Turn defensiveness into self-reflection, or defense into self-reflection. Sometimes you feel you have to defend yourself, or you feel that, you know, you feel some sense of attack, but really try to turn that into, uh, go through the process of turning that into self-reflection, asking what I, why is this bothering me so much? What's going on for me? And then finally, turn questions, turn assumptions into questions. We all make assumptions. Sometimes we have to, because we do have limited information. But as much as possible, to ask questions to see if your assumptions are correct. And then finally, believe that it's, this is a hard one. Believe it is possible to merge refresh surprise and less burden. And that's hard to do after, at the end of a long day. And it's hard to do when you're doing really different, like, looking at issues of race and racism. But just that, holding on to that belief that if we really do that, if we really stand there with each other, we can actually leave our learning together, refreshed, less burdened, and more ready to take action. So those are the, um, the touchstones. And what we're going to ask you to do is to introduce yourselves. Um, and first of all, just to think for a moment, when you think about doing this work in this time, uh, you know, of COVID and all the, all the other pandemics that we're dealing with, um, what, which of these do you want to hold on to tonight, to, um, to, and as we do this work? Which one do you want to hold on to? Just think of that for yourself. Because in the introduction, we're going to ask you to name the one, but we're, we're, you know, since we're moving, we're trying to get through some things really quickly. We're not going to ask you to explain it. If we had more time, we would do that. But just to say the one that you, that speaks to you. So the touchstones that, um, the, the introductions, we're going to ask each person to say your name, um, your pronouns, if you, if you use, if you want to, uh, your role, your racial ID, ethnic ID, where you're from, whatever that means to you, and the touchstone that speaks to you today when thinking about doing this work. Just name it. Don't, don't do the explanation of it. Okay. So who wants to start? And you can call the next person after you speak.
Uh, I can start. So, uh, I'm Tom Huntington, um, he/him, I'm a school board director. I'm white. I'm, uh, from Syracuse originally. And, um, I guess the touchstone that speaks to me is, you know, be sure to, to wonder and be more curious when it's something that might be troubling or, um, confusing or distressing, but just trying to see beyond and trying to wonder why, where it's coming from, why it's happening.
Tom, what's your ethnicity?
Uh, white.
You're white.
That's your race.
Oh, yeah, that's me. I guess, uh, let's see. European?
Okay. I wanted to make that distinction. It's important.
Uh, thank you.
I'm Addie Campbell. She is a, I'm a school, I'm a school director, my mom, she's a little boy. I would prob, I would check the box of white and then non-white Hispanic are the technical terms I'm using going out for. I grew up in Vermont, uh, and then moved all over the United States in my young, or the days. Um, and then returned back to Vermont with my little family. And I'm going to try to welcome this time.
My name is Brooke Avery. I'm a school board director. Uh, I would say I'm white, European, I'm from Vermont. And, uh, I don't really have a touchstone right now, uh, as I go through this process. I'm sure one will speak to me, so I don't want to dwell into that, dwell, dwell into that right now.
I am Eileen Dickinson. She/her/hers would be my pronouns. Also, school director. Um, I would also check the boxes of white, white, non-Hispanic. Um, I grew up in the suburbs of Philadelphia in New Jersey. I've lived in Vermont now for 20 years. And I would also say welcoming silence is the touchstone that spoke to me.
My name's Dean Rankin. Um, he, um, school director. I'm a European, but, um, and, um, I grew up here in San Jose. I would echo the welcoming silence thing.
My name's Paul Marcus, uh, he/him, um, you know my role. I'm originally, uh, I identify as white. My ethnicity is Lithuanian and Polish, maybe some Russian. And, um, uh, today, I think I'm, uh, let me go back to here. I think I'm sitting with, um, moving in, being in inquiry. Donna?
Yeah, um. I'm, I'm Donna. Um, uh, I, my, um, can you put those questions back up again? Sorry.
Oh, sure.
Oh, I can't remember. Okay. So, uh, I'm Donna. Uh, if I did pronouns, it would be not him. Uh, I don't mind she, and I don't mind they. Uh, my role is, um, kind, I consider myself more close than a consultant. Because I consider myself partnering in this work. Um, my racial idea is black. My ethnic idea is, uh, US African descent, of enslaved people. I'm from, uh, uh, Greenwood, South Carolina, I was born in, raised there, Dayton, Ohio, and, uh, came to Boston, to where I currently live. The touchstone that speaks to me today is, um, let's see. It's probably, be as present as possible. It's, it's a little tough online with, with you there. I wish I were with you.
Thank you, Donna. One of the things I didn't mention, because Donna and I work together, we work as co-presenters, so like, it may seem like we're each taking a lead on a segment, but we're comfortable jumping in and out. I think it's important to name that, because if I, I don't want to appear to be interrupting Donna, there's a whole power relationship to that. It's complicated. Um, so what we'd like to do is, if you, uh, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but I just want to think of what you think you know around this, potentially not closely. And just taking some of the questions, you're going to have to tighten, because people, you just want to think about, maybe, can I, can I, this feels, you know, this is, you're used to being here for business meetings, and you could come and work in business. This sort of requires, that requires something different. Sometimes it requires us to slow down, to be sad, really light, require a little bit, uh, but, but, but slowly. But for part of this work, um, some of it's just slowing down and really, you're like, and also, we wanted to think that we just, it's not just intellectual. It's heart, mind, desire. Let's think about, ten or so minutes. I guess, should I put this up on the screen, or is that necessary?
No, it's fine. Not getting up on screen.
We're a little dead time to on radio here again.
Paul, if you're talking, I can't hear you.
Thank you. That's where, I, I want to make sure there's space for conversation. We intend to look, so many things that were asked in these questions, but how, first of all, how did you all feel you did? Was this all, was a lot of this familiar?
Really, yeah.
And I would throw up, this would be true of a vast majority of people. And likewise, interestingly enough, um, there's a whole lot of people who couldn't pass the test to become a US citizen, which is interesting to think about, which speaks to some of the things we may want to do in our schools. So, the first one, it's, the first two questions really get at this idea about what, what race is, or how we think about race.
By who? That's my first question. You call it, one is by who? Who is identifying race?
Okay, so that's great. Thank you. So this would be the American Anthropological Society. It would be, um, pretty much scientists working on issues of race, so there's some fine complexities in, probably most of the social sciences. And it would be the vast majority of the people who I know across the country are doing the work on these issues. But I think that the key one is the American Anthropological Society, because if you think about it, how do we know what we know about race? I mean, how do you know what box to check when you check that form? So we, we've learned something somewhere, and much of it comes from the history of anthropology. And, and like other sciences, like when I go to the doctor, I can have leeches put on me anymore. Um, the science of anthropology is advanced, um, for several reasons, particularly DNA and genetics. The answer is actually none of, none of the above. That's, and, and that's the That's, and, and that's the point of this, and we're gonna talk about that, what, what race is, and I'll talk about this probably not tonight, but later that. These answers we get when people think, think, people think race has something to do with skin color, people think race has something to do with your, your culture, your heritage. What's the other, uh, your ancestry and your genes, but the reality is that's not that. In determine our physical appearance. There's no question about that, my skin color, my hair, my eye shape, um, my features. However, when we look at the underlying genetics, there's absolutely no genetic basis for the groups that we have assigned to races. So that's the, that's the key, and we'll, and we'll talk about it, but it's really important because we're ultimately, that isn't, in a sense, biologically real. We are saying that race is, the, the, the reality, the, the ideology created on that, in that created that. Um, understanding of race is very real. Honestly, it's not that we can't get, we can't get by race by morning. Um, and the second one is, is again, I've already answered, you answered this again, no, there's no, um. There's no characteristics, no traits, or even one, this, all members of one so-called race from all members of another. And, and that's, for, for a lot of people, that's a new idea, because again, we've been, we, we have a whole lot that we've taken in for hundreds of years about what it says. The third piece, the third, the answer to the third one, um, and I, is that, um, it's a ninety-eight point five percent. Between nineteen thirty-three and nineteen sixty-four, of the hundred billion dollars in housing subsidies through the federal housing, you know, it's created in nineteen thirty-three. Ninety-eight point five percent of that went to white, which means, you, you, you can imagine the numbers and think then about the welfare over time because of that. Uh, the, the answer, what's not a result of, of credit policies is actually affirmative action quotas, because written into affirmative action policies for the Fed is that there can be no quotas. Again, again, some language and some things that we want to uncover. Medium net worth of white place. Is a twelve to thirteen times, in some states it's twenty, back in two thousand and three it was eight times. Um, in Boston, a study done about four years ago, the median net worth for whites was a hundred thousand, forty-five thousand, and the median net worth for blacks was eight dollars. Just to put some of this in the perspective, and, and again, we'll add to that. Um, but, white families and black families with similar incomes. Are compared their net worth, it's, it, for whites, it's two times as great, and much of that is, is based on housing values. Know from their responses that some of you know this history well, and, and some don't, and that's very normal when we come into any group, and so the important thing is how to. How, so while this is review for some, it's new for others, and we want to try to create this common, common understanding. Um, so what percentage of population is black, I would hope that, so it's twelve point five percent, but oftentimes in surveys, actually, if you ask, um, particularly white people to answer that question, they. Forty, they, 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 they feel that there's a whole lot more than there actually are.
Good.
Sorry?
We're keeping spot. No, we just want the answers.
Uh, so the one that's not, um, the, the one that's not a, um, a racial preference program is actually the, oh, you know what, I think I left. Oh, I'm sorry, Civil Rights Act, the Civil Rights Act wasn't about, wasn't about, um, creating racial preferences towards policies that. In, um, people's opportunity. Others, and we'll talk about this, and we don't talk about these in this way, this is a really important one. The Homestead Act, uh, it's in the second year of the Civil War, create over time, one point five million white people got land. That was actually, again, through government policies, land that was created and taken by the people who lived on that land initially. But, but one point five white, million white people got, got land. And, um, I think six thousand blacks got land, it must have been right after the war. In the south, much of the land they got was not very, very good, there's a whole, there's a whole complexity about that, but the, the reality is, is that. To your forty-six million descendants who, any wealth came from that policy. And likewise, we've already mentioned the, is, and, um.
How about the USDA policy? That's the major, um, triple black farmer that had major, like, million dollar settlement.
Yeah, this history both blew them off and continues, that's very important. Um, the, um, so essentially, again, to appease southern Democrat, white southern Democrats, um, um, farmers and domestic workers were eliminated from. And the other piece in that, um. The, uh, so nineteen seventeen ninety Naturalization Act, one of the first acts passed by Congress, basically sent all prior opinions to become citizens. And having become, being a citizen. In all kinds of, owning land and, and being. Judges, being able to be elected, there's a whole range of things that being a citizen has meaning for. So essentially, if you, um, I, I guess, if I asked somebody, how, how would you define an affirm. What would be, what would people say, you think?
I think you'd have to look at specific institution, because it isn't an affirmative action policy by the federal government, or really by state, they're, they're done by institution.
Would you agree that most people would say an affirmative action policy around quote-unquote racism, there is one race over another? Whether it's a, whether, I'm, I'm gonna even. It's intentional or not. But they, would you think they would call it? What I'm trying to say is, is that we often think, when we frame affirmative action, um, when we look at the Naturalization Act, we look at the, the, um. Homestead Act, we look at the FHA policies, we look at Social Security, all institutional policies favored. One group of. And so, again, for me, it kind of, we, and we don't know that history, so, and we, that's one of the things we want to talk about, or what are the consequences of us not knowing the kinds of reasons that we have? I want to try to move along here more quickly, um, so the Thomas Jefferson was the first that made that, and, and the, and the other one, it's Abraham Lincoln. Again, I, I'll, I'll talk about that. In terms of how the North profited from the system of enslavement, excellent book is How the North Profited and Promoted in Prolonged Slavery. Um, and all of those were true. In fact, interestingly enough, when South succeeded. The mayor of New York was excluded in the slave trade, in cotton. Um, major investment firms got, are names that you recognize now, and, and major insurance companies, you know, plantations or what I would call slave colonies had to be insured. People who were enslaved were property, they were insured. Um, so there's this whole system, in northern New England, people were, were shipbuilders, lumber for shipbuilding. In, in New England ports, ships were being made for the, for, um, there's, so the whole economic system is built in, it is built in, the mayor of New York wanted to secede. Because he understood the economic, uh, economic realities of what was happening. Uh, so it's, it's been eleven senators. You know, and two of those were during Reconstruction, and seven of them are since two thousand and five.
Can she die?
I'm sorry?
Yes, uh, Thomas Jefferson was.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I'm, I'm just trying to bring out, um, um, in terms of, I think it's six thousand five hundred, they had identified between the end of Reconstruction and, um. Nineteen, um, sixty-four, there were, recent, recent research has showed that there's been, there was a tremendous number of murders during Reconstruction, around two a day. Percentage of Vermonters experiencing food insecurity is thirty-eight percent. And since COVID, that's moved up to forty-four percent, while the white number moved up to twenty-two point eight. Number of residents is zero, although there are four groups who have state recognition, not have federal recognition. And I'm not gonna go into detail around these things, it, it, the purpose of this was to get a sense of. Thinking about what, what we know. So if you have any specific questions, I can answer them. I think probably everybody at least familiar with the three firsts compromise, although not everyone is familiar with all of the implications around that. And its meaning around race and race. Um. Uh, again, I'm not gonna go into detail, wasn't the purpose, I'd be happy to talk to anybody about any of these. And then, um. In terms of. That's a Japanese term. And Chinese Exclusion Act was the first, uh, first significant law restricting immigration in the United States, but we have a whole, a whole history of those laws that we could trace through. Um, I mentioned, there's a very well-known, um, African-Americans who were involved in sort of chance, working for justice over history, I, I could, I could have picked hundreds. I just, I, I just picked a few of these, anybody curious about any of these folks?
We don't have a list.
Oh, of course you don't. Oh, well, didn't I ask you? Like, the Wheatley, Bedford Baker. Oh, sorry, yeah. So, again, I, I, I don't need to, I'm not gonna go.
Good benefit for them too.
Yeah. So David Walker wrote it, wrote it twenty-nine in Boston, he came up from the Carolinas, wrote something called the, uh. The, David Walker's appeal to all colored citizens of the world, and it's probably one of the strongest anti-slavery documents written, and some people say one of the most important documents written in the nineteenth century. David Walker's been an unmarked grave in Boston. Uh, we, we've done a lot of, Phyllis Wheatley, a poet who Thomas Jefferson felt, if we, in, in, in note, Virginia. Thomas, a well-recognized poet who actually met George, with George Washington Cambridge in seventeen seventy-six, because he admired her work. Thomas Jefferson felt that her was derivative, and she had no, that, that, um. Quote here, I think I might have it here, that, um, he says that, uh. The sable race lacks intellectually, intellect of the white race, and so again, Thomas Jefferson is important because he's a remarkable man who, who. But he holds, he, he embodies the contradiction that I was talking about, about the founding of the nation. Um, Benjamin Meenaker was a brilliant, uh, he, he was a slayer and a math, again, a mathematician, self-taught, and someone, again, that was, was, um, seen as a. Uh, an, an exception rather than a rule, and these two are, are real famous abolitionists. And again, same thing, how many white Indian folks do we know in history? And again, white, and so the ultimate question is, why don't we know this? And, and it really resonates with me, because every semester at the Boston College, and over the years, I think we had over three thousand students, and they were, in each, each semester we had thirty-six students, and they were mostly juniors and seniors. And in the middle of this, they'd all be angry at us, and they said, how come nobody ever taught us this? And it was really powerful, and it happened, it happened every semester, and it, and it speaks to some of our responsibilities. So, if we think about this, and we think about having to do a lot of statistics, but the reality is that there's, there's a, if we look, uh, there's been surveys done. Going over the past seven or eight decades, and, and every time, if, when people were surveyed in the fifties, the majority of white people felt that race relations were great in the country. And that whites and blacks had similar, and other, and we see the same, and that's during Jim Crow. We see very similar responses in the sixties, we see very similar responses up through the present date, in fact, at a point now where a majority of whites, small majority, but a majority of whites believe that. The people who are most impacted by racial discrimination are white, particularly white males. Yet, statistics don't come close to bearing that out, and when we look at all of the outcomes of the major institutions. Healthcare, education, wealth creation, jobs, housing, um. Um, life expectancy, I could go down the list, all of those, all of those statistics have either. With a few exceptions, have either stayed the same or gotten worse. That's the end of the civil rights movement since the late sixties. And so what I want to do is, I want to share with you your, that you provided us, uh. Survey. And I want to ask the question. To think about your definition, and does it account for? The, this history? And does it account for the, um, present disparities we see across racial lines? Again, there's, there's a strong focus tonight, I've left quite much bigger than that. Uh, but does, does your definition of racism account for that? Just, just to talk about that. Question makes sense?
All right, no. You want us to start questions and discuss within our, our peers?
Yeah.
If our definitions take into account. Some of the quantitative and qualitative. Issues that are right out in here. Thank you. Actually, no, I, no, I totally.
Uh, so we were looking for your own understanding, I should have been clear about that.
Oh, you were, but like, I, I feel like I don't understand. I threw all the bunch of definitions, I picked the ones that I felt like really.
That's right.
A lot of interpretation.
And I say, and I, I, we had an intern several years ago who actually approached one of their, the way they defined racism and got them to change it, but dictionaries don't, they're doing a better job, they don't do a great job with it. So, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna stop here as you're thinking about that, and here's what I want to say. As we, as we talk about, people about standing for racism. There's, um. The vast majority of people have a, what I would call an internal interpersonal understanding of racism, that racism is something that we, 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 we do, we act on. Um, it's, it's an individual-based thing. And we're gonna be presenting what we would call a systemic understanding of racism. And I would argue that the internal interpersonal definition of racism doesn't account for this unless you think that there's something wrong. With apparently wrong with black people and other people of color, or that there's some cultural deficiency. Right, both of which I, which would show are very problematic. Right, and so, it's almost like having a, having an understanding of the earth is flat, and the earth is round. And so, and the way we understand, the way we hear, the way people talk about racism. That standing has a profound influence in terms of how we, what we think and what we feel at a very deep level. And so much of our work is about thinking about moving people from that interpersonal, internal understanding to a systemic structural understanding. So that's, that's where we're moving to. Okay? So Donna, I'll, I'll set this up and then you can process it. This other, just a, a quick exercise that we do. Um, and it's a little complicated, because normally Donna and I are always more interactive, but this setting is. Um, and I need, I, if I can choose two, two, I'll just choose, can I choose you and you? Who's the first for this?
Oh, yeah.
And you're.
This is Tom.
Tom, I'm just gonna ask you to stand right here.
Okay.
And you, uh, he, he's me. So Tom, what I want you to do is, I want you to bounce in, you're in this room, just space a little bit back.
Okay.
And there's a wall behind you. So you can't, you can't see, you can see your peripheral vision, what's ahead, you can't see behind you. So then I want you to describe the room that you're in. It's just, how big is it? What do you see?
Uh, it's a pretty large room and there are a lot of books.
How would it be large in terms of, well, what dimensions?
Hmm. That's very good. So I don't know, let's see. But there.
He, I say, he, he don't have eyes in the back. I'm saying about my purpose. Yeah. You're kind of a. Triangle. It's not real big.
That's a good place.
What other things do you see?
More books.
More books, TV, market boards, me if I'm standing over here.
Yeah.
E, what do you describe the room you're in?
Sure, it's much bigger than Tom's. We've got a guy blocking the TV. I can see, I can see the red wall, I can see the station. Books that Tom's, and everything that, and.
Any people?
Any people?
Yep, people. There's a front of the room, back of the room, description of the room. So what I'm going to do is ask some, a parallel system, um, statements of history, maybe taking right, taking right out of. And I'm going to give you what we would call what you turn around, what we would call the front of the room. And I'm going to give you what I call the bathroom. And I'm going to ask you the first one and then you read the first one. You don't have to say the number, but just go down those parallel statements.
To live in the South was to live in daily fear of being by.
To live in the South is to live in daily hope of.
Alone in the wilderness, the frontier family has to protect itself from wild animals that are in here.
Well, living in an ancient homeland, they have to protect themselves from.
The prisoner, uh, pioneer faced many hardships while bringing his family along the trail.
Pioneer family is women, men, children, face many hardships on the trail.
The people watched the slaves pick cotton.
The African Americans were forced to pick cotton, watched the idle white people standing by.
African Americans contributed many words to our language.
English language, which is used in the U S today, has gained many words taken. African Americans as well as from Native American people and from African Americans, because of the natural language role.
Louisiana Purchase doubled the size of the states, greatly strengthened the country materially and strategically. And provided a powerful impetus to westward expansion.
Louisiana Purchase, a deal in which the French sold indigenous land. And the further genocide of Native peoples and the expansion system of the system was started.
The Chinese were willing to work for very low wages.
The Chinese people, like everyone else, wanted to work for good wages, forced by greedy, real wage. Orders, and racial prejudice, many white first accept more wages and hard jobs.
John Brown, who led Ireland, tried to set the slaves free, was a religious fanatic.
John truly believed in all people were great, God's image led a brave attempt to free Native people.
In late, uh, in late nineteen seventy four, women made another important gain when eighteen women were elected to the U S House of Representatives.
Seventy four, about two hundred years after our nation's founding, forty percent of the U S representatives were.
The law on slavery for control of North America was a drama full of excitement and horror played against romantic background of a vast wilderness.
The law on slavery for control of North America was used to try to play against the background of Native American people's homes.
The American Revolution did bring political, and for the constitution in many states enlarged the definition of human rights. Made the responsive to the people and constructed a more democratic political process.
The American Revolution brought a few political changes on Native Americans.
Thank you. Uh, so Donna's going to set up a, a question to reflect on here, let me go to full screen and.
Yeah, um, so, um, again, if you, if you think of that as the system, the room as the system. And the, um, and the, the description of the room and the his different histories. When you think, when you think of those, when you think of the descriptions of the room. And when you think of the different histories, what words come out, what stands in the way of the shared understanding? What stands in the way of them having a shared understanding of the system that we're in together? If you could just shout out words and Paul would write, are you doing that, Paul?
Yeah. Perspective.
Yes.
Also, people's going to go to this simplified information. This is just people that really just struggle to talk.
I have to say, I can't hear very well, but. May you can write them too in the chat if you don't want to mail them up.
Uh, yeah, I would say power, people with power, power.
Power. Feel would stand in the way, not just, not just what, what feelings, what, what, uh, spatial relationships, what stands in the way of this way?
Can you repeat that, can you repeat that last?
What feelings might stand in the way or what? Or, or what, how does the distance stand in the way? The, um, physically what stands in the way? Intellectually, on, in any level, yeah, words.
Uh, probably fear.
Probably fear.
Stability, resort, like resource scarcity. Just goes into like the masses hierarchy of needs, you know, people's ability to step outside their need for basic stability and resources.
That's great. So, you know, we could, we could keep iterating them, but the reason we do this. Is just to get a sense together of the community, of what we're trying to do and trying to understand race and racism. There's this, these two, those two histories, two very different takes on history. And all of those, all those concepts, all those realities, all those fears, all that stands in, in, in between us. In terms of people coming to some shared understanding of what our situation is and what we can do about it. And so a lot of work is the, just building awareness of that system. Um, do you want to add anything, Paul, before I go on to looking at the system?
Well, I, I would say, you know, both of you were telling the truth as you saw, when you were describing. So I mean, we need to, we need to, to, um, really, for me, I always want to think about, so how is my socialization? Um, and how have my identities been impacted by that socialization? But as, how is that? My, my identity as a white person is, you know, my identity, you know, my religious, religious background, the language that I speak, those had an impact on how I view the world. And so we just need to be aware of where we are with that. This gets in the inquiry, because you could be very places. So if we were to ask you to line up where you would line up, but in fact, they want you to embrace it, racism, just think about where you would line up in the world. And it's, it's a complex, it's a complex, complex one for me because I've been doing this work now for years. And for some, in some ways I would have myself back a little bit, but in other ways, there's that I don't see. But I, I will wear the front of them. And so, and oftentimes, when particularly. When I, when I'm, something's coming up around this, or I'm in some conflict around this. I need to step back and say, I'm in front of the room right now and I have to be willing, kind of step back and listen. And learn, and, you know, and then, because oftentimes our first response is to just get defensive. Because there's so much, we talked, there's so, there's so many feelings. Involved around these issues. And so I just want to kind of hold that as a, this is a, this is a, a picture. Okay, Donna.
Okay, can you mute again? Because I'm hearing, I don't know if other people are hearing the echo.
I have to figure out how to mute.
Well, that's a, I, I think, um, I can just do it. So, um. Can, can everybody hear me? So again, one of the, one main thing we want to get across is this idea of a system. That we are in a complex adaptive system. And that means that things happen, uh, and, and we want to create something and. Uh, uh, patterns emerge that we're trying to address, right? To get back to the thing that we want to create. So we always start in doing, uh, anti racism work with your mission, your vision and your values. We ground what it is that you're trying to, to create. What you're, um, what, what, again, what you're there for. And that's the, the sense and supporting each other as educators, right? So that, naming that, being clear about that, what we're grounded in is how you do this work over the long haul. It is do, if you stay grounded in what we're working against, we believe it's important to stay grounded in what you're for. And then what happens is that patterns emerge that have, that, that take you away from that miss, your mission. And if those patterns enlarge a society, they're, they're, they're impacting anything that you try to do. So we, we always start with, uh, the three, um, three patterns of racism, violence and militarism. And materialis, materialism and pop and, you know, exploit, uh, economic exploitation. We start with, uh, Dr. King and others in the sixties name, the three evils or the three poisons. Those are the things that are picking up in our, in our, in our, in our, in our world as human, as human beings. Specifically in the United States and a lot of the, the larger, the larger goals, the larger vision. Because of the larger so- society, that, 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 and, and, and intentions, those three keep appearing. You know, racism, violence, and militarism. And then there are others, sexism, um, ec, um, classism, ableism, heterism. Um, mil, mil, um, religious chauvinism, ecological devastation. Those are the things that get in the way of our, of, of, of this society being what it want, what it says it wants to be, right? And the more we look and move through them, the more we get back to what it is we're really trying to create. So we stay focused on what we, what, what, what we're trying to create and keep trying to move through those barriers they come up. To get back to that mission. So, um, so again, our method is to start with what we want to create, to name it, to be clear about it. What are we trying, what are we trying to do together? Uh, that's your mission, your vision and values. To name what gets in the way, and tonight we're talking about systemic racism and white supremacy. As historical, social, economic constructs that get in the way because they are so, in a lot of how we got started. And what, what do we do about it is to come up with leadership practices that help us through and get back to the mission, vision and values. And again, you never get back there once and for all because it is a complex system, things change and some things, um, mutate in some ways. And so we have at that work of really moving through those four, those, those, those barriers. And the same, the same analysis that we give for races can be looked at for classism and economic injustice. Be looked at for, um, violence and militarism, can be looked at for sexism, heterosexism. It can be looked at any equity issues that are systemic in that way. So then, um, what we, what we would ask you to do is to take a few minutes with, um, a partner. And to share, um, when you. What, what is your vision? For a just and equitable school system? What values are important to you for realizing those, that vision? So just to talk about it for, what, what, what do you ground in? What do you want that, that makes you want to do this work? That makes you want to really think through, how are these things coming up and getting in the way of the school, of, of, you know, St. John's Day being who you want it to be? Being what you want it to be for the youth? What is your vision for a just and equitable school system? What values are important to you? So if you just take a couple of minutes and talk to, talk to the person next to you.
Um, yeah, like equal opportunity?
I think for me it's understanding privilege. Because I think that that's sort of, um. I think kids here in Vermont particularly, because we have a lot of. The first of these. Can explain to me of our children.
You see. Their, their. Well, for me. I see the first step is. To work for our children to understand privilege and access of privilege and outcomes. And especially within. With somewhat lack of great diversity in our schools. It's easy for it.
Take some of these things off the table for our kids so that we can put them in a space where they can do that kind of work. And that means teaching up all of their skills.
So, so we can come back together. I have to tell you, this is very funny to me. You know, because like I could hear people at one point and it's, it's, uh, it's a lot different than breakout, breakout room, I tell you. But, um, maybe if you could put, you know, you don't have the chat, okay, so, um, anyway.
Thank you, I know it wasn't easy, it was best work and with us, you know, how engaging we, we're not necessarily. I'm not the most engaging I've ever been in my life. I'll just put that out there.
You know, it amazes me what teachers have done to do this, especially when they have to do the, I just, it's just, um, unbelievable. What teachers are, educators are doing to, to keep, to take care of our children. I appreciate it so much, it's just, it's, it's really something. I appreciate it so much, it's just, it's, it's really something.
And we're just gonna, we're just gonna have a little bit more input. And then, we just kind of want to open it up for some questions and some discussion. Uh, this is, uh, we wanted to do some framing. I'm sure there's, even everything that's going on, I'm sure there's a ton of questions. Even, you know, you bring up the word privilege, and how do we understand that, and how do we think about that? So, um, so, there's just one, one more piece of input here.
So, um, we, um, I'm hearing an echo.
Um, I hear about my, uh, daughter in, in the building, I'll be right back.
Hello, should I go ahead?
Yeah, fair.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
So, again, when we look at that, at the, at, 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 at that, at that picture of moving, of grounding in mission, grounding in mission, vision, that, grounding in what we want to create. And when we look at what gets in the way, the systemic barriers that get in the way, and when we look at the leadership practices that we, that we call on.
Donna, hold on one second, please, um, Paul's asking us to.
There's two more here, and then he'll be right back.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I'm gonna embrace the silence.
I'm gonna get some water.
Take a stretch break, stand up.
Stand up, those kids are hard.
This is not the best way to do this. You were aware of that coming out.
I know. Well, it's a part of it, I know, a big part of it is that wanting to engage in this work, and then, you know, it's a topic that is, is, should be worth its due, and it's a very, um.
Who's the question, I don't mean it in a bad way, but how do we get away from finding out the differences? That's a great question. We celebrated that stuff. Yeah, I, I think, you know, if you give us some, that's a plan, that we, you know. Can you save that for when we, we, yeah, because we, I think we all, to some degree, understand that there's a great deal of inecrative in the past, and there is a present, and it's more of a, it's maybe, maybe aberrant perspective way right now, that we are.
I'm not being silly, sorry.
Focusing, and I still listen to my own voice. People are getting angry about me using the wrong pronoun instead of, you know. In the end, I'm a person. I, I just wanted to do, this is a public, save that word. So, really, really, for a question. We have, I certainly have a response, yes. How are you doing? You seem like you're just done.
I am.
We're all toast, yeah, this is a, the hardest way to do this.
It's just, if you have COVID, you're going to.
Yeah, exactly.
Work is just, kind of, busy. Sure, uh, we're gonna have to pay your tests on this. I guess we're, we're capable of doing. And, and, uh, those two, that's how they have, me, part Zoom, part live, but.
Like, you're not a Zoom guy, are you?
I am not.
Yes. Okay, Donna.
Okay.
I apologize.
So, so, everybody, when we look, we look, whether we're looking at what we want to create, or looking at areas that get in the way of that, or look at what we need to do in order to address it, um, because we're talking about a sys, a system, we have to look on four dimensions that are interconnected. So, we start with the internal, and that's each individual's inner process. And that's what we think, what we feel, what we value, what we, it's, what is, how is, how is an individual shaped by the system that they're part of, to, to do, to be, and to do. Um, on an interpersonal level, we look at interactions between individuals, we look at ri, relationships. On an institutional level, we look at policies, practices, procedures, resources, responsibility within a given system. So, what holds the system together structurally is the institutional piece. And then culturally, we look at the interwoven patterns defining who individuals are, and how they are to do things. What our culture, how do we do things? What, what's appropriate, what, what's valued? Those are the cultural dimensions. Then, uh, let's, let's start with looking at what that means for what we want to create. So, the first thing to look at is the we. Who do we mean by we? What, who's included in that we? What do we want to create? Who is your we? So, when you're looking at that whole system, is it the people standing next to you? Is it the people far off? Is, who is your we? On an intervi, an internal level, what you want is for each individual within that group, within that system, to have a sense of belonging and a sense of responsibility to the whole. That they belong, there's a place for them, and that they're, that they're responsible. It's there, they need to take. On an interpersonal level, you want interpersonal relationships that encourage and inspire everyone to learn, to grow, and contribute. Though, that's to live, you know, to learn, to grow, contribute, that's to keep living. On an institutional level, you have policies, practices, resource use, structures that promote ownership, benefit, and leadership across for everyone. Uh, everyone in that system needs to feel that it belongs to them, needs to take, to, to have, to sense that it's there responsibly to take leadership, different kinds of leadership, and to be benefit, and to feel that sexism is benefiting them. And then finally, culturally, all stakeholders co-create a culture, a way of being together that works as meaning for everyone, that respects everyone. So, when we think about what we want to create, those are the four dimensions of it. And, uh, and then, Paul, are you, you're gonna go into what, uh, what gets in the way now, right?
You're still muted, Paul.
So, um, and, uh, Paul's gonna define, what, what is it that gets in the way? So, first, we have to know what it is, like, that we in the center, who is it? The same, there, what, what is that thing that's getting in the way?
Donna, we're not gonna go there, um, based on time, and, um, this is very, everybody, we're all, everybody's wiped out for one thing, and then settling the Zoom live thing, the way it's set up here. What I would want to ask is, in terms of thinking about those dimensions, and in thinking about your own internal dimension, what you leave, what you know, what you value, what you feel, how has growing up in this society, what were the influences on you that, that shaped your internal reality, your internal perspective? Does that question make sense? And this is really about what's influenced you in terms of where you stand in the system and the role. So, can, so, people just share some of those?
Do you mean in terms, in terms of, like, race and racism, or just?
Well, in terms of, if, if, if we're focused on race and racism today, so that, that aspect, that, that aspect of my, I think about, that aspect of my identity, that how is, how was that shaped? Growing up in this society, with this history, how was that shaped in my internal reality? Where are you from, where you been, you know, there, there, there are, there's a lot of answers to this, but I just want us to think about it. So, just throw some things out.
Well, the, the, things in my, my life, for, for, you know, I had a stable childhood, certain people really loved me. And I have a sense of self, who I am, that I could use, entirely to that. Being old as child, again, and below, like, grandparents, I really have a sense of who I am that feels important, that I can be, the way I was brought up.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that when you're not surrounded by that level of love and support and stability, it's much harder to develop a sense of self, and self-confidence, and the ability to act for yourself. And so, with those skills that I bring into the world, that puts the advantage in many situations, economically, personally, and such.
Okay.
Is that what you're trying to?
It is, but then I want to take that, then, within, you grew up in Vermont, so there's a context within that which was happening, in a larger context of, what are some of the things in that larger context related to specifically race and racism?
Well, I think it's a homing of gene, that will be a junior. My youngest child, well, that's corporate fact. It was easy to believe that issues of racism were peripheral, and they were academic. And that's how most of, through academic study, whether it be studies of indigenous people, or studies of transatlantic slaves, or studies of, and it wasn't until you, for me, even going out into the world and living in other places, did I really start to have a less academic and more, more understanding of what those things that I learned about in books actually means today.
Yes, so, that's right. And, and so, in a sense, you've already made a connection between the internal, the interpersonal, and the institutional. Because interpersonally, you grew up in a sort of, like, you see, all of your interpersonal relationships are with other white people predominantly.
Predominantly, yeah.
Particularly in Vermont, but nationally, that's the case, you know, something like eighty-six percent of white people live in communities that are less than two percent people of color. Right, particularly if you think about the suburbs, and we could look at the whole institutional reality of how the suburbs were created. So, there's that, and then institutionally, you're talking about an education system. Who designed the curriculum? What was important, what wasn't important? What did they see, what didn't they see? Who talked, who thinks about the pedagogy? Um, there's all of those pieces, so that would just be, I just.
But I was also on the cusp of this, going to UVM, I was on the cusp of this idea that it's, I had access to both then, alternative, or social extremes, what they were calling it then, when I was in college. And it was sort of outside, but there was access to it, some amazing academics doing work in those areas.
Right.
And then translating that out into the impact of the tourism, and.
Yeah. So, you see where I'm going, let us get a sense of where I'm going, was that our internal environment is, but, I, I, I won't spend more time, but our internal environment, my internal environment, I can speak to, I've been influenced by my family, right, and what they, by my friends, my relationships, my education system. I grew, I grew up in East Coast, Connecticut, actually, that was, that's a very predominantly white, white town. I didn't have a, a person of color as a teacher or a professor from kindergarten to college. Um, and so, we could just begin to see how these, you know, how, because of, and I've been treated in certain ways. I've been, um, I've, in most places I walk into, I feel like I belong. And now, I, 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 I come from a very working-class background, so I have a sort of that class piece. But, so, I may not feel I belong in terms of class, but I feel pretty comfortable in terms of my race in most places.
I've never been perceived as a threat, but something that I, I've never, I've been a small, slight woman. I'm not a threat to anyone, never felt like that, so, I believe so, particularly with black men, or men of color, face literally from the moment they walk out of their house, until the moment they close their, I'm not a threat, but people love them at their best.
And likewise, I haven't been seen as a threat because of my race. I may have because of my gender, but because of my race, I haven't. And I'm treating, you know, when I go into a doctor's office, or when I go into, you know, when I go into a store, or when I go into, oh, I have an interaction with the police, all, all of those things are impacting, so I've gotten messages from that. So, that, that shape, thinking about who I am, where I fit in, you know, it's, I don't want to go too, but I think you get a sense of where I'm going. If, if you just start thinking about that question, um, you know, who, who's, who's represented in our history books? And what, what are the messages I get from that? Right, all of those questions, we just, we begin to think, we, we could spend a lot of time individually, building that out. So, Donna, I thought that, um, we would just, there's already one really good question asked, and we just might open it up for questions that people have, and have some time to discuss that. That feels all right with you?
My connection is, can you hear Donna on your?
Uh, I can't hear Donna, Donna's muted, though, that's why.
No, I was saying, I, I think that's a good idea. I think we should have a que, few questions, and then sort of, uh, even if we le, you leave a little early, end a little early, it'll be good, and, and, uh, we can pick up next time. Has it been decided that we're gonna try to do a while?
Donna, can you, okay, so, let me, she's on mine, but.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Donna, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, yes.
Can you hear me? Now, now you're muted, Paul. Oh, there you are.
Donna, can you hear me?
Yes.
No, you're frozen now.
I think we are connection here.
It's definitely, yeah.
I can hear you.
The problem here, we're trying to do this work, I think, let's give ourselves, like, some appreciation for the fact that we're, we're doing hard to make work, and that our presenters.
Donna, Donna can hear you. Yeah. So, with, with that, let's just open it up for some questions. We've already had one really good question, you want to share that, Donna, you can hear?
I'm not sure. How do we get away from that?
Any responses to that?
I didn't hear, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the question.
Sure.
Maybe you can repeat the question, Paul.
Yeah.
You gotta acknowledge the difference, but I think it's something, how the truth, I've been trying to give everyone. Problem that I always range it for is really, I'm caring, but it's, but. It's a two-way street, I don't know, everybody, you want, how, how you respond. One of that plan thing is where I, I'm gonna get that. Um, because, I'm saying, I have enough trouble with King Travis, like, for, I have enough trouble with King Travis.
I guess, I guess, why we're, are we really different, and why do we even have to, we're all the same, and it just, it just, I'm, I'm raised in, I'm, I'm structured to be racist, I don't know. You know, we're not different.
I agree, I agree, I agree completely, that, I agree.
Well, we are different.
No, but we're not, as, as human beings, we have the same organs, we have the same, our brains work the same way, so all of that, that's what I mean by, we are, we are, that's, that's a key place that we want to go.
You know, I, it's so funny.
Let me ask a question. What are, are there disparities based on hair color?
Yes.
Somewhat, I guess you could say, there, there's a, but are major disparities that impact, um, in terms, in terms of intermarriage?
Did we ever write, like, hair color into federal policy? No.
No, and, 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 I guess what I'm trying to get at is, um, do, is your hair color? You could say that there's some research that shows that blonde, attractive women. In general, for example, intermarriage, do we, is there, are there disparities in terms of intermarriage or hair color?
No.
No, and eye color?
No.
Race?
Yes.
Yes, in fact, if you think about interracial marriage, numbers. So that, that rate, race has meaning. It's not, we can, so that's the, that's the, and, and I want to be really clear, because a lot of people say that people who do all the work, that we're trying to, to, um, reduce everything to our identities. And that's, that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm more than my race, I'm more than my gender, I'm more than my class, I'm more than all of those things. And for me, in my life, understanding what it means to have those identities has had a profound influence on how I understand myself, how I interact with other people, how I understand history, how I think about public policy. Those things are the issue for me, is you can't get through this issue by ignoring it. We have four hundred years of intellectual history, social policy, and institutional policies that have created what we have now. And we just can't say we're all the same. In a sense, we are all human beings, so we are, I mean, that's where we ultimately may want to get to, but we, 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 we can't get through that without ignoring it. And the nation, as a nation, we have not yet been able to do that. Again, I'm, I'm very concerned that as, if we can't do that. I mean, that's what drew me to this work. It's so fundamental, and so foundational, and so important, that if we can't do that, we're never gonna get through it. James Baldwin, in a letter to his nephew, said, "They, white people are trapped in this history which they cannot understand." Until they can, paraphrasing, but until they can come to grips with that, they'll never be freed from it. So, so that, that's the, so on the one hand, we have to, this isn't, it's not just an interpersonal thing. It's not just about how I treat, how I as an individual treat, or how you all as individuals treat other people. There's all of these other layers on top of this, that we have to understand, and we have to deal with in order to get through to that place where you want to be. But pronouns, I struggle with that. Particularly now that I'm up here, when I was working, I lived up here, I'm muted, in Boston, and I said, when I, when I, when I was in Boston, I actually had friends who were, were transpher. I knew, I still, I'm still friends, but it's not in my life on a daily basis. When I, when I worked, we used to talk about cultural competency, now we're talking about cultural humility. I want to be, I, I want to own it. It was like, I'm working hard at this, but I'm gonna make mistakes, and I, you know, and I, and I appreciate it when you, it's, it's not easy when I do, and you, you say something to me. I understand, looking at this from your perspective, where you stand in the room, you're looking at it very differently than I am. And it doesn't have the impact that it does, that it doesn't, so I try to, I try to be in inquiry. In that space, that's, 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 that's how we move through this. And then we, we take the time to build relationships. Um, so I, I guess that's my, my response to that question, is I don't know how we get through this. We can, we can't get through this by ignoring it. That's what we've been trying to do for our entire history. We still haven't come to grips with it. We have, we, we're willing to, we're willing to celebrate, you know, oftentimes people say, well, you're bringing up the past, right? So if that person, I see them at the Fourth of July parade, I say, what are you celebrating today? And they're celebrating, we want to celebrate the past, right? And we want to be responsible for, we want to celebrate the good side of our history, we want to quote, good side of our history. And so, and that's fine, but we're not willing to take responsibility for the other side. By taking responsibility, I don't mean that responsibility that we, in the present, did it, but that, take responsibility for that history of what it has created and what it has done.
That makes sense.
But I don't know if that, that's not gonna get to your everyday interpersonal relationships. So, 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 so for me, and, and this is, this is, I usually say this later in the workshop. Donna, I don't know if you, uh, uh, but that, one of the big realizations for this, for me, has been that my skin color has a profound impact on my life. And, and the vast majority of white people don't think of themselves as having a racial identity, because we're just the norm. Right? And so, um.
If you can't change the past, I think you have to acknowledge the past, or really, I think you have to understand the past the best of your ability, but you can't change the past. Or, um, in terms of what changes you can make. I think that's where the struggle is. Honestly, that's where I would, I would hope you guys, in the future, such as, give us some guidance.
Yeah.
But I think we all have similar doubts, but we have to have some, that we're looking for. I would, I would give a prediction as to how to move forward.
Sure, sure. It's not, it's not simply, though, for me, I, I, I'm, I know I can't change the past. I mean, I, of course, I can't change the past. For me, for me, when I saw, I saw this, I didn't know that, I was born knowing this. When I saw it, I never felt guilty, I never said, I'm responsible for it. What I said is, I have a responsibility to the present, to make change in the present. But it's very difficult to understand the present reality around these issues if we don't know the history.
Same, same thing, yeah.
Yeah, so, so it's that, but it's more than, I mean, when we start looking at disparities across race, that's, that's the past living in us. I mean, that's, and it's been, and when you begin to look at it, again, a colleague, another colleague of ours, Paddy Rosas, says that, that a lot of people have opinions about race, but very, very, very few people know much about it. Right? And so, I mean, how many of us in our lives, and some of us, but, but are in regular contact with people who are thinking about and studying these issues, how many of us are reading about it all the time? How much of us are, you know, during and billing our nights, we're not? So, again, it's, we, we have to do the work to get through, to get to the, to get to the place where you're talking about. That's the, you had, I'm sorry, you had your candle pulled, I have to go.
For me, when I think about this whole conversation, the word that I go back to is power. And who's had power in our houses, and the fear of losing power in our, and thinking about how we can raise the conversation not in a productive way, that acknowledges that, without creating strong emotions that are tied to feeling like people are losing power, which is where I feel like the bottleneck in all of these conversations happens.
Yeah, and there's a book that does that, it just came out. And I'd recommend that everyone in the board, it might be a reading to, word of leadership, called, "Some of Us." And I'm trying to think of the author's name. Donna, you, Donna, can you, we hear you now, you're muted.
Heather McGee.
Heather McGee. And so it begins, it begins to look at that, the, the issue, I don't do this, I mean, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about injustice. And that's a driver for me, but I don't, if we're doing this work because we think we're gonna help people of color, then, then, I mean, that, that's important. But I'm, but I'm doing this work for myself. Right? Racism is killing all of us. And, and, and once we, once you start looking at that, you begin to see that, 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 that white people in this country are very harmed from the racist policies that we have supported. And so, there's, there's, that, I think is the way in.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the impact of systematic racism as applies, because to me, the history has the threats that impact in our day-to-day lives today. Incarceration rates, um, would be an example, and there are many others. And if you put those into economic term, I mean, if you just want to look at it in the quantitative way, you could put those into economic terms, you could talk about the, you know, the cost of our incarceration rates, or you could talk about the law, uh, for many BIPOC benefits because of the redlining, and because of the things that took place like twenty-five years ago, or being able to say in terms of how certain communities are appraised, valued, are praised, valued in their homes. As well as what, how do we educate our children in a way that, how do we support and educate our children in a way so that their needs are met? If we break down these barriers, able to have these conversations? Because if we don't meet those basic needs, and people don't feel any economic security, we're not gonna get white kids, black kids, any color kids, be able to engage with each other, let them, you know, feel safe in their homes, safe at school, and so.
You're getting at the deep intersection between race and class, right there.
And gender.
Of course.
There's such an intersectionality to all of these things, and I think that's also like a recognition, you know, when you ask the question, like, to me, in what context are we talking about difference? Because that's also like important, you know, I'm desperate to see my children. Don't comment on people's bodies, like, just in general, like, they're, they're five and seven, the first thing they do is ask is a really inappropriate question about people's bodies. And I'm like, can you just like not talk about people's bodies, right? Like, let's just go with that part of life, and we say, I'm done with the topic, right? So should we point out differences in people's bodies? No, pretty much, like, company that's not really inappropriate. That tends to not open conversation, that tends to close down conversation. But are we talking about sociology? Are we talking about history? Are we talking about incarceration rates? Are we talking about poverty rates, vaccination rates?
The issue isn't that we see difference, the issue is what meaning we make from that difference. So for, I'll give you an example of the classic case of the little white kid in the supermarket sees a black person for the first time, he goes, what's that? And what is that? Shh. And what's the message? We don't, that's, we don't talk about that, rather than say, oh, yeah, people come from all different skin colors, they have all different hair colors, they have all different eye color. People, you know, we're all people, but we have different features. Right? So it's, it's, it's the meaning that we, we're taught to put things into categories. We're taught to think of it as prejudicially. However, it's, it's not that we make those categories, look, it's what meaning have we given those categories? And I want to go back to your point about power, because that's the key to this whole thing. As we move on and talk about, that's our understanding of racism, that racism equals racial prejudice plus systemic power. That's what we're gonna talk about, what we're talking about racism, that's what, how we, and that, and that would be our definition of any form of oppression, would be if it was sexism, we just replace sexism with racism. So of all of those forms of oppression, so that as we begin to understand racism as a system, it opens up. So that's, that's kind of where this goes. We've done, we did this workshop very different than, particularly than. Um, because of the timepiece, we would have, we'd have worked out, we would have got there. But that's, that, we, we have to interrogate that. And that gets to what you were talking about earlier. That's a, that's a high complication. Oh, I'm muted, I'm sorry.
So Paul, it seems like this might be a good time to.
Yeah.
Break, and then what we'll do is regroup and figure out, I'll figure out from the website what, what the schedule looks like, some possibilities. I'll connect with you on how you and Donna can fit into that.
I just want to see if Donna has any last comments. Donna, do you have, are you, Donna, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't. Just, just to say thank you and good night, have a good night. Thank you. Thanks for hanging in there with us tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn so that I can?
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.